We will now reconvene the meeting for June 3, 2020. And roll call, Madam Clerk, please.
Councilmember Mosby?
Present.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Present.
Councilmember Vega?
Here.
Mayor Protam Gilda Cordova?
Present.
Mayor Janelle Osborne?
Here. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Malave, do we have any reportable action from closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. The City Council met in closed session to discuss the one item on the agenda. There was a discussion and Council gave direction to staff, but no legally reportable action.
Thank you. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, or today, sorry, we have a three different items to discuss. I don't have a City Manager report on any of the events going on because most of them have been postponed. So going off of our three that we have on our agenda tonight, the first one is a discussion on revisions to the City Hall lobby to accommodate proper social distancing during the COVID-19 pandemic. So as we move forward, we're moving into the further stages of the Governor's plan. We need to begin planning on reopening the lobby to the public so they can come in and make payments, ask questions, whatever it might be. Currently, the way the lobby is set up, that's not conducive to the social distancing. So I asked facilities to take part in this so they can come up, and they came up with multiple different plans. We also brought in everyone that has anything to do in the lobby area, so Treasury, Billing Department, BTC, the Business License, Planning, Building, essentially everyone in one large room. We were all sitting in here, and we went through a number of different types of plans, what should be done. Dean, if you have one of them, we should, version one. So this is the version that was in, oh, whoops, that's a different version. Do you have the one that's just the lines? Give me one second here. So we went through, we asked, you know, the people that are using the lobby, I thought they're going to be the ones that are going to be most knowledgeable on how things would work, what they need, like when you're doing engineering of a layout of a plant, you know, you want to see the people that are actually putting the parts together, how does it best flow for them. And we have two, we have one idea that was in the packet and... Okay. So this one, what it did is it removed the center cubicle that's there that we have the receptionist sitting in and spacing out so they had the six-foot partitions between to go up to the counters. The counters would actually be spaced along this full run here versus right now, it's from this corner to about right in here. In order to get the social distancing on the cash registers and payments, this is what we'd have to do and take up this whole side of the counter. We talked to Planning and Building, they said that was actually not a problem with them. The Business License section would still remain where it is. Planning and Building would have a corner over here, but even then, it wasn't really conducive to reviewing plans and whatnot. So we'll get into where we'll move with that in a minute. But all of this along here, this darker line, would actually be plexiglass that would be going from the counter up to the roof, the ceiling. It's about an eight-foot-tall run, and that would keep this area out here. We would be doing more than just keeping the COVID issue going on. Right now, my concern, when I first got here, is if someone gets back here, there's a large, wide-open spot on that side as well as this side that anyone during, say, a council meeting, when we're busy in the chambers over here, people can come in. This door is usually pulled shut. This one is pulled shut, but they're very minor plastic accordion doors. My fear is that someone can come in without anybody seeing them, come over, they can hop the counter, and then we have someone or multiple in the back. It's just not a safe and secure system. So by putting in the plexiglass all around, that also contains that, so people can't just jump a counter at any point in time, especially at nighttime when nobody's around. So that was the first one, talking with a council member. It does, you know, it's a Ghostbusters thing, crossing the streams, you know, when someone finishes here, they have to cut across one of the directions. So that's actually not a good thing. It was very simple, we didn't have to do a lot of changes. The next one, Dean, if you can throw that one back up, was, call it like the Disneyland version, how they snake the lines around so it doesn't look like you're in a big, long line. This is the one I handed out to you, and there's copies on the table outside. So this one, we can do it two different ways. You can go this way, where then you end up here, and then you go across, and then you go back out. So this would be enough spacing on this side or this side to leave and exit. We can also flip it or rotate it so that we can have entrance on one side and exit on another side. You could go out this door. The sliding glass door is big enough, we could put an interior and an exterior border that just says, stay on this side, one side or the other as you're entering and exiting. It takes minor construction. Again, we would still have the plexiglass in here. These rows would either be, I call them the bank ballards, you just have the little ropes with the little posts. I've seen some out in the community now, they're, I'll call them like bigger Legos that sort of delineate where you're supposed to go. The other side, and I should have mentioned that before it went away, the Plans Check piece or anything else right along this back here, there's plenty of space. Building looked at it, Facilities looked at it, and this part right back here to add Plan Exam Tables. So if someone comes in and they want to look at plans, instead of taking them through the back all the way over to the Utility Conference Room or to someone's desk, our staff can come right out here and they can lay out the plans and have a handicap AD accessible a little lower as well as a standard height. And that would be plenty of room there. So that's something we don't even have today that I think would be a benefit, even if we didn't have to make any changes. So this is a minimal cost. We're trying to keep it as low as possible. Ninety-nine percent of the cost would be going to the Utilities Funds because of the way it's set up. Most of the people coming in are for our customers, or most of them are utility customers coming in to pay, but there is a minor amount that would come over and use the building and planning side. And with that, we don't have costs yet because we need to know if this is the direction Council wants to go. Once we have the direction, then we can get facilities to price out the costing on that. With that, I'm open to any questions.
Councilmember Mosby?
Thanks for agreeing with me that first one here, crossing the streams, would have been a complicated mess on the exit. I think this second one is a little better. You still have an exiting problem. Banking and the B of A in Santa Maria has done a pretty good job of doing this. And the important thing that they've done is been able to keep the lines, you know, single and not side-by-siding. And when you complicate it like that, you have a potential for it. I showed you a picture of Home Depot where they had a big maze that they did over there, and they have, you know, thousands of people going through there. But I think to alleviate the exiting, if you did that, because right now, what you have right here is you have all the furniture in the back that would allow for people to violate the social distancing if they happen to be there. So if you took the maze portion, and not always would you need the maze, at certain times you would need the maze, but if the maze were in the lobby area, and hopefully eventually soon we'll be out of this so we can go back to layer normalcy. I do agree with your fiberglassing and protecting that, defending that. I think that's a good move. But I think the maze portion should be back. I believe the central entrance way, you would probably need to glass that off, but having the person there to kind of control traffic seems to say a lot of the time for which counter to go to, having somebody there bilingual is excellent as well. Because I see where a lot of people would be spending a lot of time, if they didn't get directed where to go, of getting people up and coming to the counter and then sending them somewhere else. So it does save a lot of time by having the reception area there. And then you would have a single line coming down, and you know, at times if you ever, you know, get real, real busy, you would probably end up taking them out the door. Bank of America did that, I was there, there was 50 people in line, and they ran them out, single filed them. But having the overflow maze component behind where the reception seating is would also alleviate the potential of them sitting there right now, temporarily. Hopefully, we can get through that. But in keeping a single line coming down and kind of have the stationing, and that way the exiting would be a lot easier. Because here would get a little more complicated with exiting, you still would cross the streams a little bit. When you had the other way, you wouldn't be as much. There would be a single line coming in, they could be directed where they needed to go. You might even have the line formulate just behind the alcove so the person could walk behind the reception area if they needed to go to Planning. And they, you know, maybe potentially split the line, or if they had to go over here for the business tax certificates or stuff, then they could be directed that way. So I think if you just modified that a little bit there, I think you'd be very doable. And again, maybe in a month or two, we might be done with this, and we still have our beautiful reception area, which I think is a really pleasant thing to have for a City Hall, when you come in and you get direction, and especially people who've never been here before, a bilingual component, that really does take a lot of attention out of entrances to City Hall.
Councilmember Starbuck?
I'll just throw it out there, this will probably pass in a month or two, why don't we just let it, leave it alone? Just, you know, as is, do social distancing, single line in, when it's done, everything's back to normal. You know, we still have murder hornets, flamethrower squirrels, and chainsaw bears to deal with later, so.
So thank you for addressing two issues. The first is the immediacy with which we have to have a plan in order to reopen our lobby space. All office buildings are having to look at this and address it, and we are considered an office space. So we have to have a plan and address it. To Councilmember Mosby's concern, I agree, it is still unique to come in and have an information desk and be able to assist. And I get the motivation of wanting to have that out in front of and not have it behind a wall, and also the assistance level with all the changes and the confusion, losing that connection is a concern. So rather than talking about accommodating the space that exists and looking at the conference room that's in front, that conference room is exceedingly small. At this point, it is way too small even for the meetings that are held in it. The table's very large, it's impossible at this point to social distance in that space. I'd like to propose that that become the reception area, because you could make the back door, the side door that's the exit side that you have on this, as her access into it, and you could potentially open that full side where the other door is that faces the sliding doors into a glass wall that's welcoming, that says reception and information, so that your first stop is, you could even potentially put that part of it facing out towards the lobby so that it was less of a blockage where the hallway is and take part of that wall for Planning, so that you utilize that space in as many varieties as possible to accommodate everything we're now having to consider. And by all indications, this is not going to be just a month or two that we have to do this. All indications is this is going to be ongoing, if nothing else, for the next year to two years. So I think putting together a plan that both honors the idea that we have a receptionist and an information booth and wanting it to be accessible and the first thing you run into, I'd like to suggest that we convert that small conference room into that space and then utilize the area where the reception desk is to get a better flow for those needing assistance as well as still having that controlled exit-intrance kind of thing. And I agree that this, maybe it needs to be dropped down a line or something that doesn't, this does create a, in one way, but very hard to get back out the other direction. So it needs a little massaging, but it is better than what we currently have, and we are going to need the room if people do decide they want to come out and aren't taking advantage of the new systems we've put in place and the potential new online payment systems that'll go in place in October. So in trying to accommodate everything and think about all those issues, that would be my suggestion, as to how to reutilize potentially that very small conference room that at this point isn't very useful for anything.
Councilmember Vega?
I think if we're going to go and do any kind of construction, the existing area where the receptionist is could be reshaped or reconfigured to a point where it could stay in the same place, but maybe reshape it to a rectangular space or something more tangible instead of a round area right there if we're going to do away with the existing conference room. It seems like if we were able to reconfigure where the receptionist sits instead of a roundish area, we more of turn it into a square area, which is more condensed, but still offers the opportunity of people to be able to ask questions, ask to be redirected, have the bilingual people come in there. And right now, we have the benefit of having a bilingual receptionist and answering service there that redirects, and a lot of people come in here and they are lost. It would be a waste of time for everyone if someone was to wait in line and find out they're in the wrong line and they've got to go all the way around the horn again. So if you're going to spend any money on construction, doing away with a conference room, why don't we reconfigure the waiting area? Then you don't have to move the phone lines, you don't have to move access, but just reshape that little area to where it's more condensed, more user-friendly, and it allows for the same capabilities as far as social distancing and entrance and exits. I think that that probably would be a more, a better use of money that we spent.
Councilmember Cordova?
So I think that you have no choice but to eliminate the reception desk where it currently sits, because otherwise it doesn't allow for lines to have the social distancing. And I agree, although things will hopefully return to some level of what we call normality, the social distancing will be carried on for time to come. So unfortunately, as much as we appreciate that reception area desk where it's at, I don't think we have a choice, I think it has to go. Repurposing the conference room is actually a good idea, but I think instead of putting the window off to the side there, I would maybe open it up as one of the options that Mayor Osborne also said, to the front, so that it's a little bit of a bigger window and then the seating is still there. So all the ideas right now are good, but I don't really think we have a choice but to remove the existing reception desk right now because it won't work with allowing for lines and the proper social distancing.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Well, with a little sarcasm, maybe we could put a six-foot fountain back in there.
Councilmember Mosby?
So, again, the furniture's probably going to have to go anyways because it doesn't allow for social distancing. I don't think you would be allowed to have that in there because people can sit side-by-side. It'd be pretty hard to be able to police it. So quickly, I drew a little thing that I was mentioning where you would use this. Some of this is, like I say, the Bank of America over there did a really good job. I was there, there were 50 people in line, they got through, they processed it, and I think you would be able to do this. Should there be the time when there's a significant amount of people where the furniture is, you could have the Disneyland long lines. When it was short, you could go right in through here. You wouldn't need to take care of this, there is still opportunities for this, and it's not inexpensive to remove that little conference room. I mean, it's a process, there's ventilation, there's electric, there's, and I don't think we need to. There are opportunities that they can, maybe a couple people can still meet in there. I have seen it still being used, there's an opportunity. But leaving the reception area here, you would be able to stage them right here. You could allow them to either go this direction, or at this time, the receptionists could direct them this way if they needed to go to Planning. So you're able to do that, and then they would be exiting out the side door there. So I believe that's a simple way, the least amount of money spent. Still putting the fiberglass securities, as I mentioned before, in the areas, probably something should have been done a while ago anyways, I can see that. And all you'd really have to do in this area here is increasing the plexiglass for the receptionists. And I think it's a totally workable, doable place, and you're able to, likewise as well, if you're looking at the plan that's sitting up, well, the other one, no, this one. If you're right there, you have somebody six foot behind you, and not everybody wants their business known to the person who's right behind them when they're going through making a payment schedule or whatever. This still allows a lot of privacy. To do it this way, it's not going to cost a ton of money other than the plexiglass going up. It's not a major redo, you're not doing massive removals. Don't even know if you can remove that yet without putting in series beams and everything else. There's a lot more involved than just wishing something away, but I think this is a very doable, safe, easy, quick way to do it.
So mine wasn't a removal of the conference space, it was an adaptation of the conference space. I in no way intended it to be eliminated but repurposed and have the walls adapted in an appropriate way that meant that the space was utilized as a reception area and not a tearing down of that conference space, just repurposing it with some adaptations to the walls and the doors to make it, the first thing you interact with. I'm worried that you won't be able to social distance everyone into the lobby when you still have the receptionists isolated on the other side of that wall, so they'll have to come to the receptionist and then go back to the queue. So you're causing a flow that you're trying to prevent. So that's why my suggestion was to adapt the conference room into the reception space so that you could immediately interact and then proceed to the line. Or we could social distance some of the chairs in the lobby where you're waiting for Planning to come out and meet with you. So it was really about trying to reduce the flow that's going to come in, have to come all the way around, interact with the reception space, and then potentially go back to the lobby to find a place in line and stand in line, and still not be able to see if and when it's their chance to step up to the window because there is a full wall blocking that visual impact of it. So again, trying to listen to all of you and hear all of your concerns and address all of them and not lose any of that connection that a receptionist and a bilingual receptionist has for our community and those that visit our community, and yet create a simplistic plan that doesn't cause people to double back on and cross each other and cross streams. So that is the reason I proposed converting the conference space into a new reception area. So, Councilmember Mosby?
I think this is worth a try. You're already doing the other. If it doesn't work, you could come back and take a second bite of the apple and move on. This would be the least expensive way to do it, and we could get it done relatively fast, other than the plexiglass over there. I think it's a, people have learned now how to get into lines, I mean, they do a very good job, and I think this would be a simpler way to do it. You'd still have to man and patrol the area with the furniture in the back. If you didn't, remove it out and put the Disneyland pattern out there.
Mayor, if I may, I could take Councilmember Mosby's, I know about a fountain that we could look into. I can get all the different ideas, go back with Facilities as well as, our building official is a registered architect, that's when I hit him up this last time, sit down with them and come back and we can say, here's what it is with, at least this time, an estimate because we didn't have, it was done so. an estimate, because we didn't have, it was done so quickly, we didn't have an estimate for costs. Eric, our building official, can also look at any ADA issues. That's what I had him do on these, because he said, no, this won't do anything, but I always like to run that by him. So I can come back a second time and present the four basic ideas, and do this again. I think it'd be good to at least have from, you know, as Mr. Councilmember Mosby said, you know, what are the costs involved? How much time would it take to do something? We'll just have a little bit more detail, if that's something we can do.
I would appreciate that. Is that something you could have completed before our next meeting, so that we can help you keep moving forward on these decisions?
By the 16th, I would have to ask the staff, I'm not sure.
Because I know you're going to need a plan like this in order to move into Phase Three when Phase Three is announced, and I know that there has been a slowing of that process, but it could change tomorrow.
Right.
Councilmember Mosby?
Would doing this delay the opening of this, of City Hall? Waiting two more weeks? Are you already?
No, we can't, we're not at that phase yet to do that, so.
I mean, I could, I could try to get two other people to go along with us, you could implement it now.
I can bring, I mean.
Two other council people go along with this now, understanding that if the plan can't be a plan modified if this doesn't work down the road, and two other council people go with?
I'll give you a second.
So it looks like you'll be bringing back both concepts to us in two weeks, and I think if this is potentially something that we have to do long-term, a little extra investment in time and evaluation is important. So I appreciate you providing a potential solution, so we can make the best decision. I think there's two other items that you wanted to bring forward as part of your?
Two more. The second one is concerning our, trying to find it here, oops, missed it. So one of the things, I'm really, you know, excited, the city's been not only rebuilding, but growing the relationships with Vandenberg Air Force Base, and as we've all heard, Space Force is now a true entity, it's another division of the military. And in this case, what we're trying to do is, we had been contacted by Congressman Carverhall's office, asking to help do a self, we'll call it a self-nomination by the city, for Vandenberg Air Force Base to become the United States Space Command. So that's a, that would be very prestigious. It would again help us as a city, because it would bring more people in, more jobs, more everything. And so they asked us, they reached out to us and said, would you be willing to have this letter signed by the mayor and sent up to the governor? The governor would then take and sign every, all the other letters that they get from the different entities that are nominating Vandenberg Air Force Base. So it'll have, it would have the mayor's letter or signature, as well as the governor's, before it goes on to the Department of Defense. So this was the template that more or less came down from the congressman's office, saying, if you can fill in the blanks, the names of the cities and everything else, sign it and turn it back in. So we have to bring it forth, though, because it would be coming under the mayor's signature, but as a full council.
Well, the reason is because it's on letterhead.
Yeah.
And they requested it on letterhead, so that it does have an official impact. And the one change that has come to us as of late yesterday is, instead of having our city manager's name listed, it has been recommended since Reach has already been moving this project forward, that all of the entities making the nomination letters for Vandenberg put their CEO down as the contact. And so that would be the only change that would be made to this, to this letter. And the more letters that are submitted officially in this template, the better chance we have, if not being deemed Space Command, at least being a part of Space Command, and having some of the offices designated with us, and that would be really important. So, Councilmember Vega?
So it's designated, the mayor signs it, I understand that, and your name, it sounds like your name's going to be on there also?
No. So in this case, originally, that's what they had asked to do, is put the mayor with the city manager, but because the Reach Group, the Economic Development Group that's been helping throughout the whole region, they're sort of directing everything. So instead of my name, it would be Melissa, and I can't remember Melissa's last name, she's the CEO for the Reach Economic Development Group.
So the requirement for just the mayor's signature, I understand, but can the council be added to that also, since it's a request?
Oh, absolutely. We can all, we can all sign it if you want, it's just it needs to be turned around only quick. So if we produce it and it has all our signatures, you'll need to come by the city council clerk's office and sign it pretty quickly.
Yeah, I think it'd be more appropriate if all of us were on the same page. I think it'd have an impact.
Happy to have that. Councilmember Starbuck?
So basically, this is a form letter?
Yes.
Yeah, a template that they sent out to the different cities, saying, in different groups, like, I don't know if the T-Bid.
Yeah, so I mean, everybody that's going to compete to have Space Command is going to have the same form of letter?
Oh, no, no, this is our Space Command here. So if Santa Maria, they sent one in, it would be similar to this, Lompoc, Explorer Lompoc, all of those different entities that want Space Command here. Those in Colorado Springs, I have no idea what they're trying to do. This is our grassroots effort to try and get the.
The letter doesn't sell me, you know, I mean, it doesn't list any of the requirements that we could offer. It says, we meet all minimum eligibility. I mean, that right away says, oh, they barely make it. I'm thinking, you know, maybe we could sell ourselves based on, what are the requirements? What are they looking for? What is the eligibility? And we could expound on that.
In the rush to get this in, we asked about alluding to those things, and Congressman Carverhall's office is putting the full packet together with the letters inserted, but I'd be happy to add a paragraph talking about the fact that we're a full-service city, our proximity, the long history we've had with the base, and how we are prepared to support it being Space Command. Councilmember Mosby?
Maybe two or three more paragraphs on the history aspect of the multiple decades of working together, the city of Lompoc and the base, showing that we're not just, again, another form letter. I think there's a lot of history that could be gone in, the thousand launches that we've lived with, and et cetera, et cetera. So just like to see it a little bit added on, understanding these guys don't want to read a packet, they're already reading one, but I think having it identified a little historical in there would mean something.
Can be done. Councilmember Cordova?
And there are specific requirements, which, I don't know, maybe when you bring back the letter again, we only have until the end of June to submit this, and, or, well, not even.
Actually, no, we have to have it done, we have to decide at this meeting that I'm signing it, or that we're all signing it, or that we're adding paragraphs, because they actually need it early next week.
Yeah, they will be submitting the whole packet, Salud's office will be submitting the whole packet, but.
Our deadline's June 12th.
Yeah, so are we saying then that we'd be bringing back another draft letter, or are you just going to add it on there?
I'll add it on there, I'll add all our names, and we'll send out a message saying the letter's ready for each of you to come in and sign it, so that we can turn it around and scan it and get it to Carverhall's office as part of the packet. Any other questions, concerns, input? Enough direction on that one?
Yeah, nope, that's fine. Okay, our last one is a ratification of the emergency proclamation that I had put out, temporarily suspending city regulations that would prohibit outdoor dining during the COVID-19. So this is actually a benefit for all of the restaurant, food service type situations, where if they have the parking lot, like a parking lot capacity, I'll just use Alfie's as an example, they have the ability during this pandemic, because we'll suspend the rules on that, where they could put out a number of tables and serve diners sitting right outside in parking lot spaces that typically wouldn't be allowed. So once we moved into that phase where restaurants could reopen, instead of just allowing them to be at 50% capacity, this allows them to do even more. So it's just a ratification by the council, or if you, you know, approve it or don't approve it, is how it looks.
Councilmember Vega?
Yes, Jim, absolutely. It's a benefit to the businesses, so I would absolutely support that, so that we can move forward and get our places open.
Any other questions, feedback?
I need to ask the city attorney, do they need, does the council need to vote?
Yes, there needs to be a motion to ratify the emergency order.
So Councilmember Vega, would you like to convert that to a motion?
Sure, I'll make that motion, that we ratify the emergency order.
Thank you, I will give it a second. Any other questions or discussions? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0.
And that was my last one, thank you.
All righty. So now we will be moving to the consent calendar. For those of you that are at home, listening in, the number to call in for public comment during this meeting is 805-875-8201. And I will remind you to mute your PC, TV, or radio when your call is put through, so that we avoid feedback. So again, the number's 805-875-8201. The current public comment will be on the consent calendar items. All these items listed are considered to be routine and enacted in one motion in the form listed below, and there will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to council vote. And any items withdrawn from the consent calendar for discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communication near the end of the meeting. We will now open oral communication on consent calendar, begin with anyone in the room. Is there anyone present who would like to step to the podium for your three minutes of commentary? Seeing none, while we wait to see if the phone lines are ringing, I'll ask our city clerk if there were any written communications on consent calendar. No, we had no written input. And one last time, the line is 805-875-8201. But seeing no calls, we will close public comment on consent calendar and bring it back to council. Councilmember Mosby?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, I had my light on, but on the food establishment that we just approved, and there was a contact email from a gentleman from the Wine Alliance about the wine ghetto and what could do. So just to the word out there, the people in the wine ghetto, because they were looking at a year or so ago, closing Ninth Street, to probably do something to help them, you know, establish. So the email coming back and such was basically, get hold of ABC, do your public health document as well, and contact Brian Halverson, the planning manager. So anybody in the wine ghettos wanting to move forward, is potentially getting them back and reestablished and doing something unique and different, there is that opportunity for Ninth Street. And it did say that there would be no council action needed, they could potentially do it with a TUP. Thank you.
Councilmember Vega?
I'll make a motion that we accept consent calendar.
Thank you. I'll second. Any questions, comments before we vote? Seeing none, let's vote. Consent calendar passes 5-0. We will now have a staff presentation from our library director, Stella Blile, regarding our summer reading program.
Good afternoon, Mayor, city council members, and community members. I'm here today to give a brief update about library services and talk to you about our upcoming summer reading challenge. As you know, the library has been closed to the public since March 16th. Two-thirds of our staff have been furloughed, leaving just myself and four circulation staff in the building. We have been working hard to answer your reference questions via phone, email, and social media. We are creating storytimes and other online materials for you and your family to enjoy from home. We've completed several projects, such as painting, removing excess shelves, cleaning, looking for misplaced library materials, and preparing for our eventual reopening. And we are working towards a recarpeting of the library space, funds which were donated by the estate of a lifelong library user, with no cost to the general fund. This project has been in the planning for over a year, as the carpet is almost 35 years old. Most of the current carpet is from 1986, with patches of the original 1968 carpet in some Even though we are not currently charging late fees at this time, and all items checked out now are not due until July 1st, a lot of you have been anxious to return your books. Thank you, we appreciate that. Until we received guidance on what should be done with library materials, and we're prepared to take them in, we left the book drops locked. Last week, we reopened the book drops in the Lompoc Library parking lot only during the hours of 10 to 5, Monday through Friday, but no donations are being accepted at this So this is what our book return quarantine zone looks like. I've been working closely with the California State Library and other library directors to come up with safe guidelines for returned library materials. There is a lot of conflicting information out there about how long a virus like COVID-19 can last on library materials, and there are some studies being done right now. The State Library is currently recommending a 72-hour quarantine, which means we will bring returned items into the library and let them sit for at least 72 hours before we touch them. This means that it will take a few days before your items are checked in, so you will still see them on your account. If you have turned something in, it will not be taken off your account for at least 72 hours. Because we do not have the staff or space to handle this process safely at the Village Library, Village Library patrons may continue to return their items to the Lompoc Library. If you have an issue where you are not able to get your books back to the library, please let us know. Again, we are not charging late fines at this time. Given the nature of a shared library collection and the limited knowledge of the coronavirus, we are not able to guarantee the safety of shared library materials. Please continue to use our digital collections or order items through our Zip Books program if you have concerns. I'm pleased to announce that we're now offering holds pickup at the Lompoc Library only. We are the first library in Santa Barbara County to do this, though the other libraries are working hard towards it as well. You will be, you are now able to put something on hold online, or you can call us. When you come to pick up items, both you and our staff will wear masks for safety and to follow the current public health mandate. We are also scheduling time between pickups, so that you don't have to stand in a line with others that aren't in your household. Because we know this will be a popular service with our patrons, we are limiting this to two holds per library card, and we will only have access to materials that are housed at the Lompoc Library or the Village Library. With all of the libraries in our system doing what works best for their community, we won't be sharing materials with the other libraries for at least the next several months. Again, because we do not have the staff or the space to safely have a holds pickup at the Village Library or on the Bookmobile, this is currently limited to the Lompoc Library. If you have health issues and are not comfortable with picking up items, we are still offering the Zip Books program. You can call us to order a book, and it will be shipped to your home through Amazon with funds from a state grant. New services. For those of you with children, we are happy to announce a book bundle service. There will be a form you can fill out online, or you can call us, and you'll answer a few questions about the young reader in your home. Library staff will pick out five books and schedule a pickup time for you to come get them. We are also doing this with DVDs for all ages, with a similar form that will ask you your preferences, such as genre and format. We'll check them out to you, and you can schedule a pickup time. Thank you to all of you who responded to our recent survey. We understand that many of you are lacking access to a printer at this time. If you have the need to print something, please contact us at 875-8781. You can email us what you need printed, and then set up an appointment to come pick it up. We also want to thank you for following us and interacting with us on social media. It's been really important to all of us library staff that we have some sort of contact with you during this time. Through our social media channels, we have been able to reach about 10,000 people a week, every single week since we closed. So thank you for your continued support. Now for the fun stuff. Summer reading challenge. Our theme this year is bookation. Reading gives us a place to go when we have to stay where we are. And when we picked this theme in January, we had no idea. And when we picked this theme in January, we had no idea how appropriate it would be. So it's going to look a lot different from previous years. We will not be having any in-person programs. The summer reading challenge will run from June 15th through August 31st. It is 100% virtual. Thanks to funding from the California State Library, we are able to offer Beanstack, which is a fun new way to track your reading, collect reading badges, and earn entries toward a grand prize. We will not have any in-person programs until it is safe to do so, but we'll still have reading stories online. And with Beanstack, a way to review what you've read in creative ways that you can share with the rest of our community. If you do not have access to a smartphone or computer at home, you can call us and staff will help you log the books that you've read. Because of the Beanstack program, we can easily chart how many books are being read in our community. Please join us in the attempt to read 5,000 community, 5,000 books community-wide over the summer. It's a two-and-a-half-month period, and I know that we can do it. The summer slide that we talk about a little bit every year happens when kids are out of school for the months over the summer. And unfortunately, it is predicted that it will be a couple of months longer now than usual because of the pandemic and kids not being in school, in the classroom, still doing school at home but just not in the classroom. Reading is one of the best things your child can do to retain what they've learned over this past school year. Reading improves their vocabulary and gives them time away from screens while also helping develop their imagination and building their problem-solving skills. I love looking back on how much our summer reading has grown over the last five years. So as you can see, in 2015, we had over 900 people participate, which is awesome. But last year, we had over 2,200 participate. We'd love to hit 2,500 signups this year, so we would love for you to please help us reach that goal. New this year with our reading, virtual reading challenge is book reviews. Normally, kids and adults earn entries for the grand prize by attending library programs, reading books. This year, it's all virtual. Adults, teens, and kids can submit reviews for everything they read, earning more entries toward the grand prize. These reviews can be traditional, like you would write for school. Or for the smaller kids, they can be pictures, or poems, songs, all variety of formats. We're excited to see how creative our community will be this year. Read online. Over the last two months, our digital services have been super popular. We've created over 100 digital library cards. We've made videos to show library users how to access these resources. Hoopla, which is the middle up there, that has movies, music, eBooks, and audiobooks, all that you can stream from your home with no wait times. Libby, which is the one on the left, it's a little girl reading a book. It's also known as Overdrive, has eBooks and audiobooks. There is sometimes a wait for those materials. RB Digital, on the right-hand side, has all your favorite magazines, and those are always available when you log in. And Anki, in that bottom middle, is a fabulous resource for indie book titles. So things that you're not going to find on bestseller lists, but that are a little quirky, independent stories, sometimes a lot of nonfiction, if that is your thing. Usage of our digital collections has almost doubled since the library's been closed. We applied for and were awarded a $5,000 grant from the California State Library that helped increase the amount of materials people can check out on Hoopla. We are still working hard on a reopening plan with the State Library, but it may still be some months off. One library in our system is not planning on reopening until October, and another one, not until next year. With our limited staff and the amount of people who use the library daily, being open will definitely look different than it has in the past. We are looking at an appointment-only system that will limit the number of patrons and the time spent in the building. But health and safety will always be our main concern. Health and safety are for our community and for our staff, and especially for the medically vulnerable in our community. Please sign up for the summer reading challenge and help us reach our goal of 5,000 books read by our community. Thank you, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Ms. Blile, thank you so much for pivoting in a difficult time and providing additional resources to many in our community who can't afford. I do know that the Amazon program is a wonderful way to get unique books that become a permanent part of our stock, and that's, that's great. And I'm glad that people are able to begin to return materials so that it re-increases that stock that you're potentially going to be asked for, given there is no sharing between libraries. And to the community, please take advantage of all of the online and digital availability. It is a very unique access that a lot of communities don't have. And I know that the school district has also handed out to many some laptops and ability to get online. And you can utilize those to access the library through, through those. So I challenge us all to be creative in these stressful times. And reading, as you said, is a bookation. And I'm really excited to support you this year in this. Any other questions or comments for the library at this time?
Thank you.
Seeing none, thank you so very much. Alright, we will have oral communications on any city-related matter. That is three minutes maximum. The number once again is 805-875-8201. And you will need to mute your TV, PC, or radio when your call comes through. And we will begin with oral communications in the room, three minutes max.
Good afternoon, my name's Steve Bridge, resident. Today, you're going to be reviewing the budget and the 1% sales tax. And I understand the dilemma you guys are facing, and I certainly wouldn't want to be in your position. But what seems to have been lost in the latest challenge with the virus, et cetera, is what everyone was motivated by before. And it was public safety and police officers. Last year, when I analyzed the situation, I came to the conclusion that recruiting was not really the issue. And in fact, the police chief came before you a month or two ago and stated that while recruiting was a long process, the real issue was retention. He also said he found it really good if the police recruited were local. Last October, I stood before you with a proposal to create a program to assist public safety officers in purchasing a home in Lompoc. I suggested a $50,000 loan, perhaps a zero-interest rate, perhaps amortized over 20 or 30 years. This would have had three favorable factors. It would place officers in our community. They would not leave at night, they would become our neighbors. Their children will become members of our community, and eventually, over time, they would become local. It would create a barrier to officers leaving, and therefore perhaps improve retention. We used to call it, called it handcuffs. And it could still be used as a recruitment tool. Today, I'm guessing that some police officers would like to escape the big cities and come to a place like Lompoc. When I made this proposal last October, the council generally concurred, and I believe most, Mr. Mosby referenced previous efforts to divine a program such as this. Staff was requested, or suggested, or whatever the right term is, to bring back a plan. So today, I ask what happened to the plan? Did we implement a program and I missed it? If so, what is its status? If no plan was returned, why not? And what can we do to move it forward? Thank you.
Thank you. The number again for oral communications is 805-875-8201. And I remind you to remove your PC, TV, or radio. City clerk, were there any public comments in general?
Sorry, yes, there was, from Laura Miller. Everybody, all of council members did receive it. It was posted to the website, and there are copies up there. I can read it, or, okay.
Thank you. Oral communications is still open, please.
Hi, I'm Pastor Wiley Charles from Word of Grace here in Lompoc, also a longtime resident. I just wanted to express my deepest appreciation for the mayor and the city council and the police department in handling the demonstration yesterday. A friend of mine, Darryl Tullis, said more than a year ago something that stuck with me, and I thought it was rather profound. He said, "The movement might have been more successful if one word had been added to the title, the word T-O-O." In other words, "A Black Lives Matter 2." And I think we had the spirit of that last week, yesterday, at the demonstration. People demonstrated, they expressed their concerns, their hurt and their anger. But they continue to be models for any kind of a demonstration. In fact, I think that we have set the standard for other cities in the area that are more affluent than we are. So again, I say thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing no phone calls, having heard our written communications are published on our website, and seeing no one else rise, I will go ahead and close oral communications and bring it back to our council agenda. Item number six, public hearing and introduction of ordinance 1674 (20), amending appeal provisions in the Lompoc zoning code, Title 17.
Mayor, members of the council, I'll be very brief with this item. First, I just wanted to summarize that back in January, the council had adopted already various amendments to the Lompoc municipal code relating to the appeals provisions. For some reason, I just keep, like, glasses are fogging up as I'm talking because of this mask. As a result of that, that also required amendments that also would need to be done to the zoning code, Chapter 17. There's a redline version of those changes to the zoning code. So essentially, today, the recommendation is to introduce by first reading by title only with further reading waived the ordinance 1674-20, amending the appeal provisions in Title 17 of the zoning code, Lompoc municipal code amendment. And that is shown in Attachment 1. There's both the ordinance and then also a redline version in case you have questions. City Attorney Jeff Malavi is here, if you have anything that's maybe specific to appeal provisions. I do want to reiterate, though, in regards to the zoning code, if someone does appeal, it would remain the 10 calendar days as opposed to 20. I think that's an important thing to clarify. Other than that, that does conclude the staff, very short staff presentation. Introduce that ordinance or provide other direction to staff. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Halverson? Thank you, Mr. Halverson. We will open it for public comment. And the number again is 805-875-8201. And you will need to mute your PC, TV, or radio once your call comes through. Anyone in the room to speak on item six? You have three minutes. Were there any written comments? No written comments on this. Once again, 805-875-8201. Seeing no calls, we will go ahead and close public comment on item six and bring it back to council. Councilmember Mosby.
I'm going to thank the staff and everybody. It was a council request I made quite a while ago. Helped bring some continuity to City Hall, a little bit on the appeals stuff. I think it was quite a project to even find out what the length was of appeals on a lot of the different things. It was all over the place. So I think you guys have designed something much easier for the people to follow, and thanks for that. And if it has lights on, I'll make the motion to approve. And...
Yep, I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Item number seven is public hearing regarding nuisance abatement of weeds, rubbish, refuse, and dirt. Adoption of Resolution Number 6336 (20). And we have Battalion Chief Pashke to do the presentation.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, council, and our community. Tonight, we have a public hearing for the second letter round, and we have two different pass. We're holding the public hearing to receive comments and information from the public to show cause why nuisance conditions upon subject properties should be, should not be abated. And the staff also recommends adopting the Resolution 6336 with the attachment ordering the fire marshal to abate nuisances as declared on May 5th by the new resolution of, the prior resolution 6324, not otherwise satisfactory corrected in the time and manner provided by law. So for background, we did have, we have resolution that we did our last public hearing, 6324 declaring weeds and debris and identified parcels as public nuisances. The fire department did mail the notices to all the parcel owners listed, informing them about the nuisance conditions of the date and time and locations of this public hearing. The second letters were actually sent out and notarized. The notices also informed each property owner, if they abated the nuisances by June 1st, that the city would not impose administrative fees or special assessments authorized as we do on, from the government code on an annual basis. The fire marshal has inspected or caused to inspect, so I've gone out to these lots and seen whether they still have existing conditions that they're a public nuisance, or if they've started to clear or completed to clear. The attachment you did receive last week. And also to proceed with the abatement of the public nuisances, it is necessary for the city council to hear any objections to the clearing of weeds or removal of rubbish, refuse, or dirt. If good cause is shown why the weeds on a certain parcel should not be abated, then the city council may sustain the objection and remove the parcel from that list. If the property owner objects but does not show good cause as to why the parcel shouldn't be cleared, it will remain on the list, and council can override the objection. After hearing all interested parties that wish to speak, the city council is requested to overrule or sustain objections presented to modify the property list and direct abatement as ordered on June 2nd, 2020. The fiscal impacts, we did, last meeting that I came, we did talk about, we had two parcels. So if, that did get forced abatement, so there is a potential fiscal impact. But we do recover those fees by titering and teetering their taxes, the property taxes the following, the following tax year. So we do put a lien if necessary. If you remember, we had two parcels last year. And I'm very happy to report that I found an owner on Honolulu that did mow one of those big, large parcels into the hospital this year. So one of them won't be a concern. It was very, very good to see actually visited that site this morning. With at least five days prior to the public hearing, a notice to abate weeds and debris was sent to all owners of the subject parcels, informing them of the public hearing, administrative charges, and abatement procedures, which was presented to you in Attachment 2. Parcels cleared by the owner prior to the city council's abatement or will not be subject to special assessments and liens and to the administrative fees. Parcels cleared by the owner after the abatement has been issued will be subject to administrative fee only. Parcels cleared by the city following the order will be subject to administrative fee, out-of-pocket costs of clearing the property and the direct costs incurred to the process of the abatement. And as we did last year, the fire department would be, will contract with a landscape company to do the weed removal. And if a similar nuisance again exists on one of the parcels within this calendar year, then the fire marshal will be authorized to abate the nuisance without any further action from the city council, simply by mailing a postcard notice to the subject properties as they appear on their current assessment rule. So we'll do basically a postcard notification, but we'll give them enough time to find a landscaper and to make sure that they can accomplish that. Costs related to the annual weed and debris abatement program that are not ultimately charged to the property owner as a lien or reimbursed by the property owner prior to imposition of a lien are budgeted for and paid for from the general fund. We do have a bit of money set aside in an account for this. The administrative fee is assessed to parcels. It recovers a portion for the general fund costs associated with the implementation of this program. It's actually the only portion, if we do have to go and utilize the teeter plan, it's only cost recovery due on this entire program. And with this many site visits, it is a lot of staff time. Liens placed on part of the special assessment process are generally distributed by the county, returned to the city in the following fiscal year as discussed above, in the next annual property tax distribution cycle following the imposition of the lien. In conclusion, adoption of Resolution 6336 will allow the fire department to cause the abatement of nuisance conditions on the listed parcels and will also allow the recovery administrative costs incurred by the city for nuisance abatements. And it's, again, in accordance with Government Code Section 3957-4, fire marshal will keep an account of the cost of abatement. fire marshal will keep an account of the cost of abatement and administrative costs and submit this to city council for confirmation, as we did with our last meet, meeting when I was here, and an itemized written report showing such costs. The city clerk will be requested to post a copy of the report for at least three days prior to submission to the city council with notice for the time of submission. And that concludes my staff report. I do have some updates on the weed addendum list that you have. So my nice coffee stain list here has, since that list has been posted, we have eight that have been totally completed, four that are almost done. They've left maybe a strip of thistle against a fence line. So sometimes those are hard to reach with the mower. So I have to kind of massage them and coach them to go back and get that one last strip. We have one really large parcel, thanks to a site visit that I met with a landscaper yesterday. They contacted the owner. And the one at 12th and East Ocean, the really large parcel next to the wine building is scheduled to be mowed on the next couple of days. And I have five that are HOA manager related. And I have met with all of those. And I have them on a working schedule to move forward so that we don't have to come in and enforce that abatement form. Couple of those parcels, a little bit more challenging because they're basically the exterior portions of a wetland. So I work with environmental, make sure we're in the right time periods. We also have some homeless intrusion in that area. And we're also going to help with some wastewater lines that need to get in the same area that have weeds overgrown. So it's kind of an interesting collaboration that's been evolving over several years. And that leaves us with eight that have just not mowed. So there's six separate owners on those. Again, I talk to people first before I go rushing over and call the landscaper to go do it tomorrow. So that concludes my staff report. If there's any questions or comments or anything I can help with, I'm here.
Councilmember Mosby.
So 1600 North H Street? Is that the city's?
Which one? Oh, no. 1600 North H Street is, for lack of a better term, it's the Mervin's, where it's for lease sign right in there, that strip, that parcel. I've actually gotten a couple of citizen calls, and I ask them to be very patient because larger commercial places take, it's like moving a boulder, to leverage it slowly.
So the property in east of H Street on the other side of the airport?
Yes.
Has that been done?
That had been done once, and Richard Fernbach knows about that. He's working with a farmer that might want to do some type of partnership and farm or do some type of crop on there. And if they won't take that, then they'll mow it. Apparently, like you saw the bales at the airport, and I learn every year I do this, it was, it wasn't really straw, it wasn't really hay, it was just so thick. They had to use something that cut it, flattened it, and then bale it to get it out of there. Because it was, just came back pretty thick. And they haven't farmed that in several years, but it still keeps coming back.
So that one's not on here, though, right?
The airport?
Yeah.
No, it is not.
But it's on your eyesight.
It is on, yeah. It's, it's on both. And the staff member's been contacted, and Public Works knows too.
And maybe as a suggestion, because I know a number of people are mowing, but even when they do mow, we've still had some fires. So maybe some motivation for disking or something, especially like the one across from Home Depot? Like you had one or two fires on that one that fortunately you guys got it out in time, or it could have.
Yeah, that one's owned by someone in San Luis Obispo. And it's odd, they did sign for their confirmation, they got the second letter. They usually schedule that and get that mowed before we come to this meeting. So I'll be making a personal call to make sure they get moving on that. If you notice, the hillside has some mustard and some weeds growing up there. The dead tree, I had that removed last year. There was a really dead tree that was on the side of 7th. There was mitigation done with pine trees where there were some tree forts and stuff more in the mid of the property. And three years ago, I did the eucalyptus trees at the corner of the entrance and got those limbed up. It's been, I try not to give them the whole apple at one time, take a digestible bite each year.
Well, maybe a recommendation, at least a fire break disking would, because if that had got going, you know.
Yeah, I agree. Disking is, is great. As you've seen, even though some of the disc fields and the mowed fields, the mustard's coming back within two or three weeks. It's tenacious.
Thank you for your patience and education first. I think that's the most important thing, is that we are consistently educating those that this is an ongoing issue and that we're willing to work with them. So thank you for that. Any additional questions for the battalion chief before I open for public comment? Okay, thank you. We will now open the floor for a public comment on item seven. If you're going to call in, the number's 805-875-8201. Mute your PC, TV, or radio when your call comes through. I'll go ahead and open public comment. You have three minutes on this topic. If you're in the room, please step forward. City clerk, did we have any emails? Thank you. Seeing no calls, we will close public comment on item seven and bring it back to council. Councilmember Vega.
I'll move forward for the resolution to adopt Resolution Number 6336.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And I have a second. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Item number eight, unfinished business, Adoption of City Lompoc Pedestrian and Bicycle Master Plan, final May 2020, Adoption of Resolution Number 6337-20. And we will have Joshua Laird to present.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members, those in attendance. Okay. So thank you for the valuable direction provided at the last council meeting. So we finalize the plan with your directions. Staff can move forward with the revision to the general plan and then come back and also revise this plan. Tourism has now been added to the prioritization model. And that did move some projects forward that will help for the tourism element. We've included discussion of the upcoming project additions. Describe the process by which those additions will be included. We've included a few minor suggested projects from our public that were consistent with the general plan. And we've also honored a few of our stakeholders' suggestions by adding language that helps make the plan more complete. So next steps. Well, staff is to move forward with the general plan update, which will include but not be limited to a bicycle pedestrian crossing for the San Yenés River near Highway 246, a Class 1 path to the beach, bike paths or lanes for both H and Ocean Streets, a Class 1 path from Allen Hancock College to Vandermark Village, and bike lanes for Pine Avenue. So staff is also to update the bike and ped plan following the general plan update. And during this process, we'll endeavor to include our stakeholders in public every step of the way. In order to close out the grant that funded this plan, whose deadline is the end of this month, we need an adopted resolution to include within the plan. So now I'd like to open the floor for comment or questions.
Thank you so much for taking all of our concerns and moving forward with a plan to address those and then later make those changes to both the general plan and to this bike plan. We really appreciate you putting a plan together to address those. Any questions for staff? Councilmember Mosby.
Thanks for coordinating that, Mr. Luther and team. Thank you guys for, for connecting the dots as well. And as well, the city attorney with the document. I think the rest of the council got that as well on the 246 pedestrian bridge options that the file was too big to be sent to us, but there's a link. Maybe that can make sure that the public can be able to see what was out there. So it doesn't, that money that was spent on that doesn't get wasted. And hopefully, as you guys connect the dots with planning and such, we can try to take something to the next level there as well.
I could add that study to the plan website, webpage.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff before we open to public comment? Seeing none, thank you. We will open for a public comment on this item, 805-875-8201. And remember to mute your PC, TV, or radio when your call comes through. Public comment is now open to the room. If you would like to speak to the matter, you have three minutes at the podium. Were there any written comments on this, Madam Clerk?
There was one that came from Scott Wentz of Cars Are Basic. It was presented to council. It is outside for the public and has been posted to the website.
Thank you for that. The number once again is 805-875-8201. Seeing no one step to the mic or come through the phone line, we will go ahead and close public comment on this item. I will move that we adopt the City of Lompoc Pedestrian and Bicycle Master Plan, final May 2020, and adopt Resolution 6337, parentheses 20. Councilmember Vega.
I'll give you a second. And I also like to thank staff for a little guidance and working with us on coming and moving forward on the elements of the circulation plan, okay? It's, it's nice to be able to work together and find out where we're lacking and what we need to improve and adjust. So thank you very much, okay? And that's a second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. The next item is unfinished business regarding potential postponement or other modifications of the 2020 Fourth of July Fireworks Show due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And we have Recreation Manager Mari Guerrero to present.
Thank you, Mayor, council, members of the audience and staff tonight, or today. We are here again on discussion of the 2020 Fireworks Show. And just to kind of recap where we've been, on March 3, council did approve Ryan Park as the new venue for the 2020 show due to the inability for us to use the stadium at the high school. Late March, COVID-19 outbreak, the governor executive order, stay-at-home order, don't let go out for essential services. And then on April 5, Santa Barbara County Health Department did issue an order banning live performance venues. And it was extended until June 30 and could be extended to a later date. And on April 21, council directed staff to further research the feasibility of alternate of the locations. And city council would solicit donations to cover the budget shortfall of the event since we cannot charge ticket prices. And that shortfall for that was approximately $14,900. So the discussion today, again, one is the postponement, possible postponement of the 2020 Fourth of July Fireworks Show. Staff did secure the deposit for the pyro, $5,000, to lock in that price for this year or for the next year's show. Also, or two would be the selection of a different venue and type of show that would just be an aerial show with, without participants. So the first slide, again, I wanted to bring back up was the location at Ryan Park. If, if it was chosen to, just to be an aerial show, it would be smaller mortars comparable to the high school, which would limit some of the view. The, the budget shortfall on that would increase since the Flower Festival at the time of April 21 did not cancel. But they have now canceled their event. So we would be solely responsible for all the fencing that would occur. So we wouldn't be able to share those costs. The other, the next parcel would be privately owned agriculture land. Mr. Bodger has been real great and willing to work with the city. So the Agfield site on May 27, the Santa Barbara County Fire Department informed staff that the Ag site would be the most viable option if approved once submitted. One note that it was, that they noted in the letter that the city would be responsible for all suppression costs on county jurisdiction land. And just some areas of the discussion from the last one was the traffic that they control. Staff did meet with the police fire and talked about that. Police are estimating four to six additional officers that would have to help with that. Concerns then that people would still be driving across town and trying to regulate having large crowds. Fire control as well, there's always that potential. Caltrans permit. One of the recommendations was the closing V Street so we wouldn't have cars or pedestrians in between Olive and V Street. But that would need a Caltrans permit and a control plan. And this, right now, at this short a time, it would be very challenging then to get that permit. Staff did reach out to the county of emergency management just to make sure then that we'd be able to do the show, we wouldn't be in violation. But they kind of referenced us back to the mandate of the, of then the order and the potentially of us being in the violation because the potential of over to 250 people trying to get to the spot to get a better look at the, at the show. The next site was River Park. And on the 27, the county did inform staff that they would not issue a permit for River Park. Areas of concern that they had was the proximity to the riverbed and the surrounding, the dry vegetation response. If there was an issue into the riverbed, it would be very difficult and very resource-heavy. And the concern of the large homeless population in the riverbed. Just kind of, again, wanted to give a visual from the slide that we showed in the past. This would be considered the most viable viewing. But with us using the higher mortars, the site viability could be better. But again, it always depends on what the weather here is on Lompoke. If we did choose, then the Agfield fog and those considerations. The neighboring jurisdictions, just kind of wanted to give you an update on that. There was only us in the city of the Galida still in the consideration. And I was told yesterday that Galida did cancel their show or postponed until next year. And also wanted to put out which funds have been committed by the community. Again, just wanted to relay this and thank all the people then that donate, donated to the show or have the committed funds. We have Elevate here in Lompoke for $2,500, $2,000 from the Schumash, $1,900 from the Flower Fest Association that Tina Mercer put on a funding campaign. So thank Tina for all our hard work on that. Alshire and Winder, the corporation, our city, our city attorney's corporation. Councilmember, Councilmember Mosby for $1,000, $1,000 from John Lynn, $500 from Nick Gonzalez, and $250 from our city attorney. 500 from Nick Gonzalez, and 250 from our city attorney, Mr. Malway. So, with the total of $10,400, that was reported back to me from council. And that concludes the presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions and...
Mayor, if I may, real quick, just if Mario can give a little bit more. So, if we did it somewhere besides our normal stadium, which is a 300-foot fireworks, if we go out to say the Bodger property and we move to the five-inch, what does that do to stay within the same price range? What does that do from our cost and how much time of a fireworks show would that change? Do you happen to have that?
The firework price would stay the same. If we went to the Ag land, we would be using the four and five-inch, the mortars.
The time of it, you know, does it go from 20 minutes to something else?
It would still be approximately 18 to 22 minutes. Since they would be larger mortars, they would be bigger shot. So, it wouldn't be as many as the more shells that they put up at one time at the school. So, it'd be more single shells and bigger blast, but it would still last approximately within the same time. There would be an additional fee of what we talked about from the police department, having additional staff out there to try to, try to regulate the traffic, the control. And at this time, we, we wouldn't be able to get a permit to shut the V Street down. So, that would be a possible more regulation from staff and then the police trying to keep people from congregating around that Agfield.
Councilmember Mosby.
So, I talked with Mr. Albro a little bit, the, about what our finances were. And it seems like there's a little more than the $15,000 in the account. Or maybe he could answer.
Yeah, there's actually $18,000 in that account.
Okay, so there's...
So, I do have a question for our public safety. I think our chief, fire chief is here, and maybe you can speak to both issues. But my concern is that all of the surrounding communities have canceled their firework events. And county fire has obviously shared concerns about whether or not the permit would actually be approved. They're okay with one of the locations, but whether it would actually be approved is still of concern because these events are considered part of Phase Four, as I understand it. And so, my question to you is, with your years of experience, do you have the same fear I do that it will have an unfortunate effect of drawing in far more people than our public safety department is capable of managing currently?
Good afternoon, Councilman Mayor. Yes, yes, we do. One of the things that we fear is because no other area around here, and just recently San Inez decided that they're not going to do it. We will draw from other cities, and it will be very much like happened yesterday. We're gonna, we may have a large crowd show up, and we don't have the manpower, both fire and PD, to take care of this. There'll be traffic issues, there'll be people wandering around. Safe and sane fireworks are going to be sold at the same time. I actually would, would hope you could consider maybe disallowing that this year. Just, you know, add a little more. They were, both safe and sane, illegal fireworks were used yesterday during, during the march and, you know. And throughout the country, they've been used to throw out, they've been throwing at firefighters, they've been throwing at police. You throw them in a car, it's going to set the car on fire. They're not exactly as safe and sane unless you use them exactly as they are required. But the crowds would be the biggest concern. And we could be presented with a problem of not keeping the social distancing, not meeting all the other requirements of COVID, and also with the problems that we have right now with the protesting. It could present a huge problem for the city, and we may be overwhelmed.
Thank you for sharing that. I appreciate it. Councilmember Mosby.
What did you guys do about Mission to Mars when we had that event? Yeah, what did you guys do?
The Mission, the Mission to Mars, it was all concentrated near the airport. There was a limited amount of people that was available. So, I mean, this, there was, there was not the COVID-19 or the protesting that was going on at that time. So, it wasn't quite as big a deal.
There were at least 3,500 people there that came in a very tight area. You were promoting people to be side-by-side. I don't think anywhere here...
That was during the time that there was no COVID.
You're correct. Are we doing any promoting of people to being side-by-side with this show?
There is no promotion to do that.
Okay.
But knowing people, they will. I mean, just bringing in the cars and parking cars all over our, all over city is going to create some issues.
That happens daily at Walmart and Food Co. and Albertsons. I mean, that, that happens all the time.
Not the amount that you can expect. And people will want to get a good look, and they will be in areas that they probably shouldn't be. And then also, if we continue to have safe and sane, we have the problem of visibility. I don't know if you were out and about last year, but because of the display from the show and the safe and sane, visibility in this town was almost, you know, less than 10 feet. And if you have people walking around from all this smoke, you're going to end up hitting people.
Visibility where was less than 10?
Up and down the streets. I was wanting, I was going up and down the streets. I tell you, it was bad.
There were areas that were bad. You are correct. You are correct.
It was a safety issue. And, you know, even with the safe and sane, you're bringing a lot of families and other people together, which probably would not meet all the requirements of what the CDC and public health.
The county was able to open beaches. They opened beaches down in South. And you saw the people that are down there. You see what's going on on State Street. They're able to get through it on their own areas. This here, we have a parking lot where people potentially could congregate in their vehicles. We have one at the community center. We have some there. They have people who will hopefully stay at home and be able to see it from quite a ways away. And I think to understand, first of all, this is not just a fireworks show because it keeps talking about a show. This is celebrating Independence Day. It's a little bit larger than just a show. You have a lot of this, this conflict that's going on right now. Whether you have the fireworks or not, you're, you're going to have the density. This would hopefully being high enough, people could stay home and see it. Would stop the people from forced congregations to be there.
Well, you can't see them from inside your house. So, you're going to be outside.
In your backyard, yeah, or front yard.
You're going to be looking. You can't confine people to your backyards. It's just going to create a very unsafe environment.
What, did you, did you post those same concerns yesterday?
Yes.
People's right to assemble? Did you guys go and stop their right to assemble?
We did not stop their right to assemble.
So, I think one of the things that especially Chief Mariani could speak to is that preventing people their right to assemble is, is absolutely something that yesterday was designed to do, was to make sure that their right to assemble was allowed. And it was spontaneous, and it was the community. The city itself creating an event that encourages assembly at a time when it has been mandated that shouldn't be happening is not a constitutional violation. I, I think that, that's the one place we have to be very careful is realizing we as a city, we're not a private organization choosing to still have the event. We're another government entity that is sponsoring this event and putting it on at a time when there is mandates for no large events. And that it's very difficult in the normal circumstance to have a large event like this, even in a controlled scenario. But when no other event like this is going on, whether it be a fireworks show, or the Cal State Fair, or the Santa Barbara County Fair, or Fiesta all around us, and people are hungry for that interaction, it is human nature to want to congregate. It is human nature to want to gather. And at the same time, it is our job to protect our residents and our citizens from that potential effect and to protect the staff that we do have from being, having one more stress added to them that isn't already there. So, Chief Mariani, I know that our fire chief has already spoken to the concern, but I'm glad you made a step over.
Yeah, I've got a couple of things going on at the moment, but I did come over and rushed over. I'm a little bit out of breath because I was running. Anyway, I have some real concerns. I would love to have a firework show. I think it's a great thing. In light of all that's happened the last three months, I think would be great. I just don't think it's prudent right now. Since this weekend, I've had to deploy and send people to Los Angeles. Had to send them up north to be part of a task force as part of our ongoing alliance with other of the law enforcement agencies in the county. Yesterday, I had to deploy every member of the police department for a peaceful protest, and I'm very grateful for that. I appreciate the conduct of our Long Poak residents who came out and exercised their constitutional right. But it was still a draw on my resources, people that haven't had days off, including me. And we were there. Two weeks ago, when this was first proposed, I put up a bulletin on our, on our bulletin board to see if I can get volunteers for six people. I have one person signed up for that right now. And we're going to need a minimum of six additional officers. Last year, we didn't have a worldwide pandemic. We didn't have protests in progress. And on Fourth of July, the sheriff gave me 10 additional people at one point to come into the city to help us with some of the activities that were going on. And we had nowhere near the challenges that we have today. And I know it's a really important thing, and believe me, I would be the first to support you if times were different. But I'm asking you to please use some prudent judgment. Can we just spare it for one year? I plead to you. We've been fortunate. I got on my knees last night thanking God that things didn't erupt because I didn't want the mayhem that I've seen in other cities. This is just not the time, folks, and I'm pleading with you. Make a prudent decision for the safety of our city.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff before we open it for public comment? Seeing none, we'll open the issue for public comment. You may call in at 805-875-8201. Remember to mute your PC, TV, or radio. The number again is 805-875-8201. The floor is now open in room. If you would like to step to the podium and speak on the matter for three minutes, you may do so. City clerk, were there any written communications? There are no written communications on this issue. Once again, it's 805-875-8201 to call in for a public comment on item nine. Seeing none, I will close public comment. Trying to find a balance for all this. And I, well, we'll reopen public comment. The calls came through.
Just closed it.
Hello, you're live in the Long Poak City Council meeting. You have three minutes to provide public comment.
Yes, thank you. Honorable mayor, members of the city council. My name is Ann McCarty. I'm a Long Poak resident and the executive director of the North County Web Crisis and Child Protection Center. And I'm just calling in to support the fire chief and the police chief and urge you to heed their warning and, and listen to their concerns. They're the people with, with their boots on the ground. And I know that, that you, you listen to them, and I'm just encouraging you to take their concerns and use their knowledge because they have far more than any of us. Thank you.
Thank you. We will close public comment once again and bring it back for discussion. So, in looking at trying to find a way to still celebrate our country and hearing the pleas, I think we could consider that we could find some balance in still having safe and sane fireworks as much as our fire chief would like that to go away, that the community still needs a possible outlet, and that within our own community we have managed that. And as much as we'd like to have more control over that, that is something I think that we could find a balance to still have. And potentially consider postponing our firework display to Constitution Day. Constitution Day is September 17th. And it might be a unique way as we come out of COVID-19 and potentially by then Phase Four has been lifted, that we consider that as an opportunity to still have an event this year, still celebrates our independence and our, our reason for the United States. And, and actually is very relatable to what we're all feeling and going through with the pandemic, with all the new issues we're dealing with, with the protests that are going on. So, I think considering an alternate date within this year at a later time that still honors our country and is a celebratory time. The weather is great during that time of year. We often don't have fog during September. So, I'm just throwing it out there as a potential solution so that we don't feel like we've eliminated the event, but instead are sort of, sort of trying to pivot like so many entities out there with still finding viability as a way to share in the joy of living in a wonderful place that has so much and so many opportunities. And we want to celebrate that, and we want to connect. And, and it's difficult right now. And I don't want to put any more stressors on anyone, but I don't want to deny them. So, I, I'm proposing that we consider delaying till September 17th, which is Constitution Day. Councilmember Mosby.
So, I've kind of been the driving force behind this and went out and challenged people to come up with money, but never had the police chief plead with me on something. And, you know, as much as I want to celebrate Independence Day, I can't go against your plea. Would not be prudent at all. So, to everybody out there, I said we had to have this, and we, we still have the safe and sane component. Understand, my reason for changing my direction is the plea of the police chief. And he's never done that before up here. I can't go against it. And I'm making the motion to pull this whole item and, and, somebody can bring it back when they want at another time, but, you know, I think enough said there with everything that's going on. And, and as much as I want to do this, and as much as I went out there and thank all the people who stepped up to bring the money to the table that we did there and such. You know, my, my agreement with them is if the show went on, their money. If it didn't, they'd get their money returned to them. So, I assume that would, would be happening there as well. But I'm making that motion. If I could get a second of that just to bury this item, and you guys can figure it out later on or bring it back as a total different item if you have another day that you want to do this. But that's my motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Vega.
Thank you, Councilman Mosby. I think that it's prudent for us to be mature and make good decisions right now. I see with the protest, you know, count our blessings, that it was peaceful, and I applaud that. I actually was watching from a little bit of a distance. And it wouldn't have taken much for us to turn into something else. You know, we've seen what's happened. I just think we need to make some mature decisions. The business owners here, I've seen people were putting boards on their windows, and I've seen them preparing because they didn't want to lose their inventory. This base, basically, this city has, is made up of small businesses who can't, these people can't afford to lose their inventory or their livelihood. We don't want that here. I think that the safe and sane element is an encouragement for people to stay home with their family members and still celebrate in their own way. in their own way. So as you know, many of us that have older folks or people in these rest homes, you still can't visit there. It's not a good message. You know, I have several, a couple of family members in there, and there's still no visitation. The only way you get to go in is if it's at the end of life. And I think that we need to also make mature decisions here. So I'm going to go along with the chiefs, and I think for the public, we need to send a good message that we don't want to invite other people into this city that could be, or unknowingly, for a little bit of fun, could bring in a little bit more of the virus. So I'm going to give a second that we not, but I'd like to say not that we bring it back on September 17, that we just postpone it till next year. Use the same money, the $5,000 is there. Let's just go with safe and sane for now. So if I could, I'd just like to, instead of doing another event just to make someone happy, let's just save it for the next year. Let's see what happens. And hopefully, this thing will be gone.
Are you good with that?
Are you modifying? I just said pull the item, which would bring it back.
Yeah, pull the item, but, you know, I did see the mayor say.
It brings it back next year anyways. I mean, it.
Okay. As long as we're postponing it to next year, I'm good.
Yeah, pull the item.
Thank you. Yes, that'll be my second.
All right. Any other questions? Councilmember Starbuck?
Real quick, just to be a city attorney, city manager here, one of our agreements with Fantom and TNT, if I recall correctly, was that they were going to donate $10,000 or $5,000 each, whatever the amount was, for funding additional public safety that was paid off the sale of the Safe and Sane. So since we can't get anybody to sign up to work the 4th of July or anything, are we going to still levy that requirement on TNT and Fantom, or?
We're going to have to look at the agreement with them and see whether it requires us to reimburse the money if we don't have a fireworks show.
Yeah, there's something in there. I mean, I just don't want to leave that laying out.
Councilmember Mosby?
So I think there's two components. One was the public safety, 10 grand or so, but there's also each of the nonprofits that are selling are going to contribute to the ground show. So if we're not going to have a ground show, do they this year have to contribute? So either there's two sides of that to be investigated.
We can look into both of those.
Councilmember Vega?
Yes, I have one more modification or an ask from city staff. If not, come back to council. I know one of the options was the baseball diamond area at Lompoc Senior High. I don't think we got a response back, right, Mr. Troop? Because we never heard anything back.
No, I've not heard anything.
And maybe you could elaborate on that ask, and then maybe what we can do is maybe work on that for next year, because there was an ask that asked if we can't do it on the football field at Lompoc High, that it be moved over by the baseball diamond area, which is to the west of the football diamond because it doesn't have artificial turf. And the other ask that I'd like to do is if we can't, we can work on this ahead of time, the ask and having the option there for that and the FAA, they've said no before, but with enough time, I think that would be nice to have those two options besides Ryan Park for next year.
Yeah, we can continue working on that. I'll get, actually, with Mario to touch, I reached out once to the district about that section. It's that northwest section of the high school. It's the two diamonds up there. It does fit the fallout zone. It's far, it's about 800 feet away, I want to say, from the stadium. So I did send up a request. We have not heard back, so we can do a follow-up, and that would be a great year for next year.
Okay. Thank you.
If they approve our plans.
Yeah, appreciated. And that'll be out the airport. That's why I was asking for the FAA. Thanks.
So the motion on the floor is to postpone the event till next year and bring back a report on the matches that are typically required as part of our contracts and how we're dealing with those. Any other questions, concerns? Seeing none? And that passes 5-0.
Thank you all very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Item number 10 is the fiscal year 2021, request for city council discussion and directions on supplemental appropriations to the biennial budget fiscal years 2019-21 for new sales tax revenues, including appropriations for payment to CalPERS of city's unfunded accrued liabilities, adoption of resolution number 6338, parentheses 20, approving budget adjustments and supplemental appropriations related to the new sales tax. And with that, I will hand it off to you, Mr. Albro.
That was mouthful, huh? Dean Albro, management service director. Turn the lights on. Easier to see. This is the third meeting that we brought this to forth with you, April 7. We had NHA advisors come and talk to us about CalPERS options, pension obligation bonds, restart, prepay, just name a couple. I also talked about the comprehensive annual financial report, CAFER. And you can get this online. I know you guys all have this. I wasn't going to talk about this tonight. There's a couple hundred pages of debt on the financial condition in 2019. I am going to talk a little bit tonight, but I also talked April 7 about the mid-year. Did an update on where we are with the first year of 1920 this year. On April 21, I did an update on CalPERS and potential options for paying back our unfunded liability. Even though it's today, I'll say tonight's agenda. I was just going to go over today, the year one and year two of our current budget. When we kicked off the budget, we had a $315,000, $315,000 and $14,000 overall, a $300,000 deficit. If you remember, April 7, I came and I talked about year one, what it looked like before the COVID. This is what my data looks like. I'm not going to change any of this. I won't really find out how I actually did until August, which is going to be biting my nails. But I did do the expenses and the revenues and talked about what happened from the COVID in your packet. I talked about the starting numbers are 315, but I did an attachment, which combines everything together into one. You can see the main things that might be worth mentioning is the TOT is one of the ones that's going to be down. Cannabis numbers are going to be 100,000 higher than that number right there. I anticipated a pretty big revenues from that, much higher than I thought. I didn't adjust my bottom total because you added some contract for building inspections, which offset, so they're both about 100, ones plus, ones going to be a minus. So it'll be pretty much the same number down there at the bottom. So if we go to year two, we started out with a surplus of 15,000. So you can see here that we had a little, we're expecting a little bit of extra property tax. We're going to see, almost all the negatives on this are from the COVID, from sales tax. Everything that's bold in this sheet is where we're asking for appropriations. We're asking for 4.9 in sales tax. You can see all those other numbers. A lot of this is from the COVID. Like I said, the recreation's about 500 down. Overall, it's about 1.3 million, we anticipate, will be an effect of the COVID. And that could be higher or lower depending on how fast we go back to normal. At the bottom is the recommendations for expenditure appropriations. We already passed the MOU supplemental appropriations for the raises. We're asking that you bring down the, well, the last three are from the direction of council to add back the three held police officers in the 1.75 parks positions. We're asking that you lower the overall vacancies. That was around 800,000, down to 400, so to be closer to what we'll actually see through attrition. That number is a little high. Overall, we had 1.2 million in last year's budget. We held about 24 positions. We got about halfway there. So we're hoping that you'll, in order for us to achieve your direction, you lower that vacancies citywide down to closer to 400,000. And the bottom two are to reset the CalPERS from the current amortization payment schedule to a 15-year amortization schedule, keeping in mind that this is irrevocable. Once we go to CalPERS and we ask to have this adjusted, we can always shorten the duration, but we can't go back to where we are now. And we anticipate a little bit less in part time due to the fact that we're shutting a lot of the recreation or slowly phasing it back in. Overall, we're anticipating about a 1.9 surplus in year two, giving us pretty close to a balanced budget, 150,000 positive. And that's really all I had tonight. I know we've kind of gone through this already. Just recommending that we adopt the resolution that's attached and get the appropriations so we can move forward.
Councilmember Mosby?
Mr. Albro, can you put up the, those amortization schedules that are from the state that I? One of the reasons why I asked for it, because it's important to see, you know, what we're doing is showing the roughly 13-month window, but showing really what the long-term of doing this, of doing the fresh start, as they've called it, and locking it in. And here, I think it's important that we see, and if extra money does become available, and as you go on, the amount of savings that the city has is significant. Also, a lot of the money that every year that the city has just through sustainable increase in revenues of taxes, how that money normally always gets absorbed in paying off the unfunded obligation. With locking this in, every year, you would see somewhere between 600 and 900,000 a year of more money coming into the general fund that's not getting absorbed. So by locking this in, we can travel on, and then things sustainably can go down the road. You know, so if you're looking here at the miscellaneous plan, and these are state charts, these aren't mine, these are CalPERS, they're valuation charts. And if you see right there, the 15-year payoff for this, the miscellaneous, you'd save $13 million. If you're able to do any part, or even if you could do the 10-year, which I was hoping to do, but we can't, the numbers, potentially, we could do some here and there, but you would be saving 28, $29 million. And that would have been interest money that was just disappearing. So going into this schedule, it does save us significantly.
It's right here.
Right, right there on the bottom, the.
It's hard to see that, but that's the savings from, this is from the 15-year, and then this would be the 10-year.
Sometimes it's hard to see where you're going. And we're doing this, we're cleaning up some of the messes of the past that happened that were really anticipated. We've heard a lot of talks and conversations about how many dollars were basically given away when they shifted the PERS from 2-0s to 3-0s, and they decreased the amount of years you had to work down to 50 or 55 from 62 and such. And so, yeah, we're not getting a brass plaque on a new swimming pool, but I think this is some of the most prudent.
And just to give everybody an idea of what we're looking at, this is the unfunded accrued liability portion of the debt. CalPERS puts this out in the valuation report. They haven't got out their report for this year yet, but they will be shortly. And this is, like I said, this is the different payment schedules that you could pay this debt off faster, like you're explaining.
And roughly, you have for the safety, which separates out paying off the safety plan, which was one of our main recommendations, but we see in the staff report, Mr. Albro's recommending locking in both of these, and you'd be saving, I think safety's on the 15 years, about $8 million. So you're saving the city $21 million over the next 15 years. And some of the easiest money you make is the money you save. And this is a huge, a huge point of why we need to go that way. I don't know if the, if the rest of the council wants to see the safety amortization schedules, but they're on there.
Yeah, it looks the same, but it's about eight.
Save about 8 million on that, and about 16 or 18 if we could do 10 years. But if we should happen to come across some surplus money. And I think the county shifted to 15 years a couple of years ago, didn't they?
Yeah, I believe they're on year four of their 15-year payback, maybe five. It's been a while.
So I think, in a lot of what we're doing here, when some people say you need to support public safety, you need to support city hall, that's what we're doing here. We're paying the rest. What are we, 60, 62% funded?
Yeah, pretty close on one.
So 40% of the.
Sixty-eight on the other.
Yeah, 40% of the pension, we haven't been catching up. So this is paying for all the people who are going to be retiring soon and the people who have already retired. This is paying the rest of the paycheck. And I think it's important to understand what we're doing. And this will free up other funds, and if we can get the town, well, we are getting the town back on track. And through our growth component and sustainable measures, we will see other revenues come in as long as we're careful with it. And there's a lot of great things that we can move forward with the city. But I think this is also putting out a signal to those who have worked here in the past that we're saying, hey, we're not, we're not looking at bankruptcy. We're honoring our debt to, you know, the 300 and many that are retired and the more that are qualified for tier ones.
And just to also talk a little bit too, thank you for letting me talk. One of the reasons I kind of changed my stance is CalPERS had showed a 4% to 5%, when we, last time I talked, in April, they had about a 4% to 5% loss, and we were looking at probably 20 to 25 million in unfunded liabilities. Today, when I looked at it, they're probably closer to 5% positive, which means we'll probably miss our mark, but we could also see, we could hit our mark. I'm kind of holding my breath going in from here to June 30.
Councilmember Vega?
Hey, Dean. If you could step through the process of, should this motion pass? And you mentioned to me about the reset of CalPERS and how soon that would come about.
What I called CalPERS, they pretty much said they can do it anytime they want. The only thing is that it won't be on our valuation report if we give it to them too late. Bill Karp, the guy I talked to, who's the representative for CalPERS, said he might be able to do it. He kind of wanted it in April. I wasn't quite ready to give him that, pull the trigger on it. So it'll just change this report a little bit. Would have to go by that 15-year thing, and then next year would show up. But a reset's simple. We can, I can do a memorandum to CalPERS, and it happens instantly.
So what would be your plan as far as right now? You'd be waiting for a certain amount of time to do a reset, or?
No, if you guys tell me to go, I'm going to go.
I like the fact that we're dealing with our debt. I mean, you know, the fact of the matter is, yes, it'd be nice to have it expendable, but, you know, I did have the conversation with the city manager, and I did ask him what his mindset was, living within our means, you know, within our budget or building our budget, and then spending more, it's not going to work right now. You know, right now, we just need to come up and be sustainable so that we can move forward. Because with this debt hanging on us, I think you know that we're never going to be moved forward. We're going to stay right below the bar. We're always going to be behind the eight ball, and we're always going to be arguing over retirement and pensions with these, with the employees. And I don't think it's fair each time because they do have a benefit package. It just needs to be controlled. So thank you so much.
Yeah, and I think we're good to go forward now. Like I said, I'm seeing a little bit better numbers. I also think it's worth mentioning, though, as CalPERS phases in some of these losses, and actually, I could go a couple pages before this, you can see all the losses through the years, and they're phasing it in. So if you remember, I showed you that payment schedule ramping up. So that surplus is little by little is going to come down and down. And I'm a little bit concerned about 2027. I know it's a long ways away, but that's my concern because all those will be phased all the way in. And I probably will be coming back with different type of ways to mitigate that. CalPERS has done a pretty good job of working on their investment portfolio strategy, but I still think we're a little weak on their funding strategy. I still think we're a little weak on their funding strategy.
Thanks for the explanation.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Well, after many hours of discussion and thought on this, I'll just give my two cents in here. This sales tax will provide additional public safety with the three police positions and additional parks people. So I mean, there's a huge thing to be said about that with this money. When you say the word 21 million, that's a lot of money in 15 years to save a lot of money that, you know, what else do you say about it? What I think is that, as government, this is one of the few times that there's some long-range, long-term thinking going on here. We're looking at a future, not an immediate need. And it's going to take care of a lot of problems for the city. It'll make easier budgeting, because you'll know for the next 15 years exactly, as long as our sales tax meets 4.9, we should be good to go on this. And one of the hidden treasures on this is the fact that later on down the road, our enterprise funds or the utilities, the rates will be set. A 218 study will not have to bring in retirement. How much do we have to raise the utility to pay the retirement? Because we've already got it locked in, and it should provide a very stable revenue stream for the utilities. I mean, this is, to me, a no-brainer to go ahead and do this, and let's just make it right for our kids.
Yeah, that 21 million, a big chunk of that's utility, so it'd be nice to save money for our citizens there as well, keep the utility costs down.
Dean, can you clarify once again that we could do this with an internal policy document that doesn't lock down future council's ability to be more flexible if the economy isn't as rosy a picture as you've so positively painted for us? Because I am still nervous as to how long and the impact that our economy is going to have, not just for the next two years, but the next 10 years and how we recover. And while we could do an internal policy reset that says we are going to use this, number one, to aggressively pay down all these downs, the fact that with CalPERS and that restart, as you keep saying, once it's done, it's done, and you can't do anything except shorten it, and there's no going back and negotiating a new contract or doing another reset. So I just want to make sure all of council realizes we're tying the hands of future councils' flexibility by not doing just an internal reset and aggressively paying down every chance we get, and making that a priority through policy, rather than potentially locking us into something that at some point might be detrimental, because we can't access the funds in a more flexible way in case the economy continues to go belly up for longer than a few years.
Yeah, I think I'm not so worried about this year or next year. Like I said, I'm really concerned about 2027. And the reason why I picked that number is because that's where that payment schedule gets pretty high, and I'm hoping that if we do see some losses, I would come to you with some funding policies to try and keep that from escalating out of control in those years. So that's something that I'll need to look at and judge, but yeah, I have the same concerns.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions for staff? Councilmember Cordova.
So, Dean, I think I have been very open with you and our city manager about, I don't feel comfortable with these projections. I do not feel comfortable, nor do I believe that we are really assessing the aftermath of what will happen. We were already on a level of decline when it came to our TOT and such, and then now with the COVID, I know that that's just a portion of it, I understand that. But I think that the unemployment rate will be there for some time to come. And I think I'm concerned with still believing that we're going to be receiving that $5 million a year in sales tax, because if we have a high rate of unemployment, our community will not necessarily be in that, in that position to spend the money right now. I know that you've mentioned to me that we are in a better position in this community, unlike Santa Barbara perhaps, or the neighboring communities, because they rely a lot on tourism and people coming in and spending that money. But once this expendable income goes away, that some of these families have been able to receive and been blessed with during this COVID period, that money's going to be gone from those homes. And without tourism making a bounce back, I mean, you're still seeing hotels that are sitting empty, not just in Long Polk, but just in the neighboring communities, Santa Barbara. And I understand that it's taking a while to get it back up, and it's going to take a while to get tourism back here. So a lot of the sales tax that comes into this community is not just on the backs of our residents or us as residents, but it is, a large portion comes in through our tourism that comes in to this community. And you're, I'm, it's just, I don't think it's going to be there. So I would love to be able to take care of our debt and adopt an internal policy, I would agree with that, rather than locking us into something where later we are, we can't make a change, and now we don't have the means to be able to give our community residents, we're paying down our debt, yes, which I 100% support, and I was a part of that from the beginning. But COVID changed things for me personally. And so, once we're in a position where our revenues aren't coming in the way that they're being painted, and it's happened in this city before, and I am astonished at the way that we griped about it in previous budget seasons and in previous council meetings, and now all of a sudden now, we're 100% blessing that this year, we're going to close on a negative, but in a year from now, you're telling me that there's going to be a surplus of almost $2 million. I don't see that happening.
Well, that's because of the sales tax component.
I know.
Originally, my, or our future estimates for sales tax is closer to 5.3 million. That's why I put 4.9. I don't think we're going to quite see those numbers. I also decreased the rest of the budget, 1.3 million in revenue streams. So, but you're right, there's a lot of unknowns. There's a ton of unknowns. I've never studied pandemics when I went to college, so, and you know, I've seen a lot of like recession '08 and '09. This is totally a different animal.
And it's hard for me to swallow terms like sustainability when we're, yes, it is sustainable to pay down your debt, but this city doesn't even have a full economic development, I mean, through cuts, we keep, in the same breath, we're saying sustainability, we're also saying living within our means. So we're still preaching that Long Polk is, you can only afford this much. We're still telling our residents, you can only afford this much. And so, sustainability, to me, would be adopting a plan where we're paying down our debt while we're also improving the economic structure of this community, and I'm not seeing both sides of it here. I'm just very concerned.
Councilmember Mosby.
So one of the items that didn't seem to be in here that the motion was before was the negotiation with the chamber and funding the chamber. What's the story with that?
I've been in contact with the chamber, and our discussion was for the chamber to actually put forth a plan. Instead of me just saying, I'm going to give you this much, what can you do for me? I said, what can you do for the city, and what would that look like? You know, what are the different projects or economic development or whatever it is? So the president, Amber, is working on that right now. So it's not in here, because I have not had a chance to talk to her, but I know she's also working on a plan as to what, what she would like to request from the city, and what would that mean to the city in terms of projects or some end result? You know, how can we measure it? Anything that comes forth, I'd want to have some kind of metrics to say, did it meet what you said you were going to do or something of the sort? So that's why it's not in here yet.
And then that's when the money, the money asked would be at that time, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'll bring that, I would bring that back to the council to present, and I'm sure Amber would want to be here to talk about what she would want to do and why she's requesting those funds.
Okay. Because that was one of the council requests, so I'm glad you filled in there. You know, I know we're not in full deliberations, but I would have that in the resolution somewhere lightly about the continued discussion with the chamber, because that was one of the motions before to direct that to come forward. Which, one of the suggestions was, is mentioned, an economic development element, that element would be there. And in response to what was happening before, I think we spent somewhere between $3 and $5 million on an economic development division over the last six, seven years, and I really question how much value that we got out of that, shifting the element, which we have one in our general plan as well, that we have to have an economic development element, and putting that in with the chamber and aligning that way, that was one of the reasonings to go that way. Watching how it's traveled over the years, over the last 40 or 50 years, the economic development element has gone in the public, it's gone with the chamber, it's gone with the city. And I think it's time that we look at it going back with the chamber at that thing. So to answer your question, Councilmember Cordova, that was my thought process there. You still have the ability moving forward, if you're not meeting the numbers, some of the tools that you used before, which were holding some of the positions, and I'm not talking the public safeties, but the 22, 24 positions that you had, those are still items that were used in the past and, you know, during the 2008 downturn, which was significant. So you still have those in your chest as you approach 2027. You still have the ability to do that in forecasting. You have the ability to do inter-fund transfers. I think the last numbers we had was, what, 127 million cash on hand, not all of it could be transferred, but you do have significant...
About 27 or 28 million, I don't know if the number is there, is our employees' pension fan, their contributions to their ICMA.
So you had 132, 132 million here. So there are, there is ability to do some of these, to get through some of the rough times that we have. We're a lot better shaped than a lot of other cities by having that possibility to do that. So to answer the council members, there are, and the city of Long Polk does have buffering capacity better than others that aren't full-service cities. 2008 was a much larger crisis to get through, and studying that budget of how they had to move through that, that was way more complicated. But I think this as well would free up. And if you also look going forward, you see what other councils have thought, when they had a little extra money, what they've done, and how they have tied our hands. And I love our swimming pool, beautiful pool, but we have a $15 million pool. We have a $10 million community center. We have some other things that our hands have been tied for because of councils of the past, and that maybe in hindsight weren't quite as prudent, but paying off a debt obligation that was created, again, by previous councils that are tying our hand, I think is prudent.
Any other questions, staff?
If I could too, Mr. Mosby brought up something, what happened in '08 and '09, and in my, I think the 20, I think one of my second presentation, I talked about how much that CalPERS had changed their portfolio and their strategy. So I thought it was important for me to bring what the rate of return is as of yesterday. They got annihilated in '08 and '09. They were so risked, they had the investments invested in such risky items that had high yields, that they really got caught short, and they were 35 and 9 minus. They didn't do that. They've done a big work towards changing their strategy. That's why they're only seeing, well, they're actually seeing positive. My guess is after today, I don't know what's driving the market up, my guess is they're going to be about a positive 5%, which is only a 2% pass. I think something else that Ms. Cordova talked about, that I thought thinks worth mentioning, and she's right, there is a lot of unknowns and a lot of scary things in our budget as far as the revenue streams, but one of the things that is nice as a government is about 75% of what we get, this city, is attached to the role and other funds. So we're almost guaranteed, if you will, unless the housing market takes a dive. So 75% of our revenue streams are almost, we're almost sure we're going to get it. So it's that, it's the sales tax, the TOT tax, and the recreational divisions that, Gil is definitely right, those are the ones that concern me a lot.
Councilmember Cordova.
So, and I will say, I respect and I appreciate the word of every council member on this council, but when I ask a question, I want to hear the answer from staff. I, I don't want to be convinced by another council member when I have a genuine concern about what the future of the city is, because I don't think that we have the answers up here. I'm looking to staff to provide those answers for me. So although I do appreciate it, I don't get the answers from staff.
Any more questions for staff before we open to public comment? Thank you, Mr. Albro. We will now open the public comment on this matter. The number to call is 805-875-8201. Remember to mute your PC, TV, or radio if your call is put through, or when your call is put through. We will now begin public comment in the room. If you would like to speak to this matter, you have three minutes. Please step to the podium. Were there any oral communications on this matter? Yeah, thank you. Written communications, thank you. There were no written communications on this matter. And remember to mute your PC, TV, or radio. Seeing no one rise and come to the podium, seeing there were no written communications, and seeing no calls coming in, we will close public comment on item 10 and bring it back to council. Councilmember Mosby.
I would make the motion that we move forward with staff recommendation. I would just ask that the, let's see which one I got, that the verbiage in the resolution would, where it says the fresh start, would be more of a statement allowing the city attorney to wordsmith that would be a, where it says, you know, a shall enter into the fresh start, I guess is what I'm asking for, because it's a little gray about that.
What section are you on?
Oh, I'm trying to find.
Section four. To approve budget adjustments to revise budgeted appropriations for fiscal year 2020-21 for additional payments to CalPERS UAL from the current payment plan to a fresh start for more aggressive 15-year payment schedule for both miscellaneous and safety plans.
It's in there, but having that verbiage in there state that you shall enter into...
Enter into the contractual agreement with CalPERS for the fresh start.
Yeah, so in that section and then back the previous page, fourth paragraph, having that same verbiage go into there?
The fourth whereas.
Yes. I don't have a number on my page. It's where, the front page of the resolution.
So that whereas says the city council desires to add appropriations to pay down CalPERS unfunded accrued liability from the current payment schedule to implement a more aggressive 15-year payment schedule. You just want to...
Yeah, by entering into a contract with CalPERS, like you said on the other page.
To contractually implement a more aggressive 15-year payment schedule. Okay, that change can be made to that whereas, and then...
And then, so another thing, a statement, because the council request was the continued negotiations with the chamber, and come back at appropriate time to discuss the funding or... Might, because I mean, I was looking at the city manager.
No, I think I can get with the city attorney, we can add a section five that would say continued discussions and negotiations with the chamber, and be brought back at a future date.
Okay. I think that would complete what I think we directed to go forward with.
Councilmember Cordova.
Dean, I just have a couple of questions. What is our reserve account currently sitting out right now?
For the general fund?
Mm-hmm.
About 1.6 million? About one point six million?
And what do you predict that that will be at the end of this fiscal year and then at the end of the next fiscal year?
It will pretty much zero by the end of this year, and it'll be almost back to where it is right now.
And if we adopted this, how long would it take for us to actually start building that back? And how many years would it take for us to get to the point where we need to be to have that be at the percent that it is required to be in order for this city to feel some level of safety net?
In far as the reserve policy at twenty-five percent?
Yes.
If we went back and the COVID wasn't a part of it, I mean, next year I imagine we'd see about two point five million. And so, I don't know, you could probably see that drop down about four hundred thousand per year. So it could take about four to five years.
And if we adopted an internal policy where we are still aggressively going after the Calpers debt, would we or would we not be achieving the same thing?
It would hit it, but to me, the thought is that if we're not funding properly, and it's only if we're seeing losses. We're not funding properly, our, I don't know if you remember when I went back, the Calpers way that they fund the losses, they wait two years before they even start getting it in the valuation report. Then they phase it in twenty percent every year. So you're almost paying interest on that debt for almost seven years. To me, that's a mistake. My demonstration was by the loss of April, we would have paid probably five million dollars more by doing that than if we just started paying out in the first year, we know there's a loss.
And in the request for appropriations, where we're asking to put this money back in or to be able to spend this money because we're anticipating a surplus now, how many police positions are we down right now? Not including the three that are held in the budget.
I want to say it's thirteen to fourteen positions.
So by giving back these three positions, although it seems like we're the good guys, we're doing a good thing, and I do get it, that is a good thing, we can't even fill the positions that we have right now. And at least in the year and a half that I've been on this council, we haven't been able to fill them. And we continue to actually drop that number. So by putting this money back in, I mean, you just heard Mr. Bridge stand up and say, if recruitment's not an issue, then what can we do to entice or to figure out a way to get... So when we talk about police, you know, public safety, it's not about, it's not just about paying down their pension, but it's also about the current condition of this city and the fact that we don't have enough cops on the streets. You just heard the police chief plead, practically get on his knees and beg for us not to put more pressure on him.
Well, that's one of the reasons why they had the three held vacant positions and the one point seven five parks position. That's why I asked for the extra four hundred thousand is because the majority of the positions that we've been holding, the twenty-four vacancies, a good chunk of those are police. Police is general fund one hundred percent, so it's a big, big benefit. But it's also, we just can't, we couldn't balance the budget. We had twenty-four vacancies and we just weren't unable to balance the budget. We were still showing a six hundred and thirty-three thousand dollar deficit. So that's why I asked for the extra four hundred, so we can actually start filling those police officers in park positions, so we can actually have our service levels the same equaling our funding levels. Because before, it's been, we had service levels in our budget here, but our funding's way down here, so...
If I can jump in too, for Councilmember Cordova, I think I understand what you're saying is, if we added ten more police officers, how can we fill them? You know, we could have twenty-five vacancies if that was what the council wanted. But we are having that issue. We have been somewhat successful. We had four people go into the last academy, two dropped out right away, two just graduated. But there are another six or eight months before they come on board, they'll be brand new, you know, rookies. That has been the hardest part, is how do we bring over a lateral person that has the experience from even one year to X amount of years? I'll get with our HR department, I don't know, I think all their cities are having that issue of trying to get an experienced person over. You know, as Mr. Bridge, when he said, he goes, with all the things going on, maybe someone wants to move to a place that doesn't have quite as many issues as a larger city. But I don't have a good answer, some other places. I mentioned to some of the council, we had a sergeant that just left after twelve or fourteen years here. He took a thirty thousand dollar pay increase to go to a city that I would not, or an area that is, you know, I don't call it as desirable of an area. But he got that, plus a signing bonus and other stuff. So it's tough. Cities are bidding each other up on different types of positions. And police, not fire, everyone still wants to be a firefighter. We'll open it up, and an hour later, we got to close the opening. But police is getting very difficult to bring people in, given everything that's going on out there. So from a recruitment of experienced people, we'll have to look at what's going on. Other places too, if you've, if you're at a certain, you're a tier-one classic, that's the original that the UAL all came about, and you're moving to another one, you might have to go, depending on what the city's adopted, you might move to a lower retirement rate. And some people go, I've already got, twenty years in, I got five more to go. I'll just stay here because I don't want to lose that retirement level to a lower level. So there's a lot of different things that have been going on against all the cities trying to recruit people. So I don't have a good answer, but I will get with Gabe in HR and see if there's a way we can reach others that we haven't reached yet and, you know, really put together a package that shows the benefits of living in Longoke versus a very crowded big city.
And I appreciate that, and every time I bring it up, that's the answer that I get. And I know there probably isn't no real answer out there right now, so I respect that. But my last question will be this, okay? What would happen if we adopted an internal policy for the next year? And then, what would happen if we adopted an internal policy for the next year to finish out this budget cycle? And then somehow, we were able to see a budget that actually included sustainability, future, infrastructure, growth to our general fund reserve? And then also adopted the responsibility of being able to pay down this Calpers? What happens in one year? Even if we're still adopting, let's say, an internal policy, but what happens one more year, Dean? What happens in one more year? What's my worst-case scenario here?
I don't think I can answer that. There's really not much of a difference other your timing. You can start next year, or if we do an internal payment, it's relatively the same thing. I mean, I'm actually kind of excited that we actually have, for once, the opportunity to fill positions and, like I said, have the service levels and the funding levels equal each other. I've been going through cut after cut after cut. I've been screaming forever, we don't have a budget for building. You know, we had the air conditioning go out, we had to lay people off just about to fix the air conditioning.
Yeah.
So you're absolutely right, but we have been so broke ever since I've been here and ever since '08, that none of that has been on the table. So these are things that we could definitely work towards, and I agree with you a hundred percent.
So I don't know if I can put a second motion on the floor.
It's called a substitute.
A substitute motion that says, let's adopt an internal policy. Let's put all the puzzle pieces together, let's adopt an internal policy, and let's try to hash this out in the next budget cycle where we're actually bringing all the components, all the elements together, and we're looking at the full picture rather than just saying we are going to spend this money that we think we're going to get. And I hope that we do get it, I hope that we bounce back, and I hope that all this happens. But let's also look at the other things that our community needs. And that would be my substitute motion, is that we adopt an internal policy today, and we proceed with that, and then that we go back and look at it in our next budget cycle, and that we are able to then look at this, you know, signing the dotted line with Calpers.
I would give you a second on that motion. Councilmember Mosby.
Okay, so to answer your question, I know you don't want me answering your question, but if you look at your vacancy report right here, it'll tell you how many police officers that we don't currently have. So sworn officers, not counting the three we just added on, well, there's your answer to your question. So instead of making false statements, there are five vacancies of sworn officers right now. There's three more on top of that that we're adding on, on top of here. One of the reasons why we're seeing discrepancies is there's some people that are out for light duty and otherwise, they're making the gap when you hear what the chief has to say. We do also have three vacant positions of the unsworn positions in here. So the positions are funded, and you heard the chief say before, it wasn't about the lack of money. It was about the numbers of people he had to go through to get the people he felt qualified to bring into the town. You make statements out there that really scare the public when you say this. And the numbers are right here in the black and white. And one of the reasons why we are in a predicament is we did offer the nine percent raises. And through labor negotiations, they offered us the three positions. And we gave them the nine percent more to bring more back in. And it did bump our numbers up significantly. But I think the appropriation amount more that we're looking at here, because the way we were paying the pension obligation was through holding positions, and every new dollar that was coming in was being absorbed by the unfunded obligation and increase in the pension obligation. What is the total amount more paid by the general fund? If we did this way than if we just continued forward with a thirty-year payment schedule?
The two bottom ones are the general fund's portion of the increase going from the current payment plan to the fifteen-year payment plan.
So your general fund only, you're looking at approximately nine hundred thousand dollars more a year in this first year of paying it in, if you go to the fifteen-year. And that's coming from the sales tax. The other money will come from your normal increase in property tax and sales tax that has been coming through naturally. You have somewhere between four hundred and nine hundred thousand a year in the last...
Increase from tax.
Increases that comes in...
Last year, we saw seven or fifty, I thought that was pretty good. That was a little high for most, but most is about six hundred, where you just see two increased value of property and tax.
And that's the sustainable money that can be used for the new trucks and stuff like that that we need to do. You know, I know there's a passion about getting a fire truck, but as I found out, money that was being saved and put aside, we got a four hundred thousand dollar brush truck. I think in hindsight, probably should have bought the new truck for the town first. And then there was a chief's vehicle, then a B.C. vehicle. And we should have been disciplined and just focused on that fire truck, we would have had it. But we spent money in other directions. That's what I'm concerned about. If we traveled down the road, and it wasn't long ago, we were looking at a thirty-million-dollar fire station. That's what I'm concerned about. If this doesn't get locked in, you're going to do things, and things will happen in previous councils. And that's what your motion would allow that to happen, that previously down the road, good things at the time, all of a sudden end up costing you a lot down the road. And, you know, everybody thought, the pool that started off, if you look at '01, '02, it was going to be a two to three million dollar pool. Much like the wastewater plant that started off at fifty-eight million dollars and ended up at a hundred and five million dollars. And Longoke is really good at doing that, overspending. And that's my concern. If you put this in and you have got the recommendation from the professional staff that this is a way to do it, an ability to do it, and you end up saving this kind of money, it can go a long way. I never get an opportunity for anybody to even give a second on my motion, but I would like to think that there would be an option.
So I think we're all very passionate about paying down the debt. And we all realize that it is a priority for all of us and that for the long-term health of our community, it absolutely has to be addressed. I think, out of respect for Councilwoman Cordova's concerns, is the fact that we now have something that none of us could have predicted a year ago when we began this discussion. And if we don't stop and factor that in and take a year to assess what our new reality is and our new budget is, we may be making a mistake that other councils have made as well. And that our staff has said with the questions, that it doesn't make a difference between this year and next year regarding the payment we're scheduled to make. We can make a more aggressive payment if the funding comes in. And when we begin to look at next year's budget and try and factor in all the new CIP, all the new things that we need to address as well, and we have a clearer mind of what the actual results of the sales taxes, what the actual rebound of the economy may or may not be, we will all make a better decision. Whether we're still on council or not, that council will have the flexibility to do what's right, not what's rushed, because we're worried that we aren't going to get reelected or we are going to get reelected, or if I'm not here, I haven't left a mark or I haven't done what I promised to do. None of this is about any of us. This is about doing the right thing for long-term for our community. And coming up for a year gives us the chance to see what COVID-19 pandemic has done to the overall economy. Gives us a chance to see if that sales tax that was approved is additional revenue or just makes up the loss of what was coming in. Gives us a chance to see if we are going to be able to address any equipment or infrastructure issues. Or we're out of luck because the economy hasn't recovered, and now we've locked down a fifteen-year payment that we can't actually see the revenue coming in for, then we've all left a legacy of a burden that is just as bad as you see the pool or the other entities. So this is why I seconded Councilmember Cordova's desire to say, take a year. Adopt this resolution without the official reset with Calpers. Appropriate the funds, address what we need to this year, and let's see what happens as we move forward. So the substitute motion stands with a second. We'll go ahead and have any other discussion or questions on it and take a vote. If that fails, you're welcome to bring your motion back. Are there any questions on the substitute motion? Seeing none, I would ask council to vote. And that motion fails three, two. Councilmember Mosby.
I'd like to bring my motion back with the amendments that discussed.
Councilmember Sharvet.
I will go ahead and second that motion with the amendment to the resolutions.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes three, two. Final item on tonight's agenda is item eleven, consideration of community benefit agreement proposed by Strauss Wind LLC in connection with a hundred-megawatt wind energy project to be located on private land southwest of the city. And that will be a presentation between our city manager and city attorney.
Thank you, mayor, I'm going to give a quick little intro, and then I'll turn it over to our city attorney. So this started, just, I want to say about a year ago now. The Baywa group came forward and had met with the city and had offered an agreement. And originally, it was for a million dollars to help the city. Unfortunately, as we went through, the city attorney went through it, there were many, many different options in it or other areas within that agreement that did not fit what I thought was a good agreement for the city. It left open the city having to agree to all permits, you know, approve all the permits, don't say anything wrong about the situation. The big one was, you know, it ended December 31st. And if no dirt was being turned, all bets were off on any funding to the city, but we would still have to abide by everything else in there. So that was a good deal. Baywa came back to talks more because of the use of I Street as their primary way to get up to the field that they're putting in for the wind turbines. And I Street is not a truck route, it's not an approved truck route, that would be F Street. I Street is easier in many different aspects. One, it's the most direct route, straight up Miguelito Canyon. So Baywa did come back with a second agreement. And instead of going back and forth as we had the previous time, I thought it was best just to bring it forward and propose it to council to get your input. And I'll let Jeff give you some of the insights on what he thinks.
Thank you, city manager. City council, we are here tonight because our Public Works Department has received an application for a few permits by Strauss Wind to transport equipment through our city on our public right-of-way city streets for their one hundred-megawatt wind energy project that is proposed to be located on private land southwest of the city. Since the project is in the county, the county is the agency that approves the, is the lead agency for sequer purposes and approves the main development permits for the project. But the... But the project also needs permits from a number of other government agencies like the City of Lompoc and Caltrans and perhaps others in order to do their project because the only way to get to their site southwest of the city is to come through Lompoc. Or perhaps the only economically feasible way to get to the site is to come through So the permits that they need from Lompoc are an encroachment permit, a transportation permit that's called an oversized vehicle permit, and also an agreement with the city to, for a repair of all of the damage to our roadways that might occur from their transporting this very large equipment through our town. Our public works staff is here and they could probably, they can definitely describe the project better than I can, so they are available for questions today. And also, the applicant from Strauss Wind is here. Mr. McCormick is in the audience, and he's available for questions as well. It is going to be, it's going to require closure of our city streets specifically from the northern city limit at Santa Lucia Canyon Road, continuing south on Floridale, and then east on Ocean into the main part of town to I Street, where they're going to turn to the south and exit the city at Willow Avenue and go down into the unincorporated land. This is going to require closure of those city streets for multiple periods of time for up to eight to 15 weeks. Not all, not for the entire eight to 15 weeks, but periods during those eight to 15 weeks to allow an estimated 161 to 203 extremely oversized truck trips to come through our town. They're going to be carrying the very large wind turbines and equipment for their project. It will require removal of traffic signal poles, street trees, street lights and signs, and other items from the city's public right-of-way. Also from Caltrans right-of-way, and that's why they need the permit from Caltrans. They also need a permit from Caltrans to travel on state highways outside and inside the city, or outside the city. The county has already approved the project. They've already approved their permits that are required to be approved for the project, and they've approved an EIR for the project. So as far as the city's permits are concerned, the applicant has applied for the city permits, but we, but the application is not complete. And we are still, our public work staff is still waiting for some information from the applicant to complete their application for the city permits. When that occurs, when the application is deemed complete, then the public work staff is going to make a decision on the application for the city permits. And they'll either approve it, conditionally approve it, or deny the permits. And we do intend to staff to require, as a condition of approval for those city permits, to make the applicant pay for all of the costs that the city is going to incur from them traveling through town on our streets and any damage that they might cause to the streets. And that includes not only immediate physical damage, but also wear and tear on the streets. That's the status of the application for this project right now. And, but that is not what we are discussing tonight. What we're discussing tonight is a separate item, which is a community benefit agreement that was proposed by the applicant, sent to the city on May 21st, and requested, the applicant requested that it be on the city council agenda tonight. The proposed agreement by the applicant is attached to your staff report. And in summary, it offers to pay the city $150,000 when the project is completed. So at the, at the conclusion of construction and when the project is ready to sell electricity, the applicant will pay the city $150,000. And in exchange for that, the city is giving up its rights to oppose or challenge any of the approvals that the applicant needs from government agencies other than the city. So the county, Caltrans, any other government agency approvals that the applicant needs. Importantly, this $150,000 is on top of, it's in addition to any of the fees or cost recovery that we are going to require as a condition of the applicant's permits from the city to travel through on our streets. So there are some additional conditions that are very important in the agreement on the applicant's payment of the $150,000. First of all, and now I'm at the bottom of page three of your staff report. In order for that $150,000 to be due, the applicant has to have begun transporting equipment along the city streets using our approved permits by June 15th, 2020, which is in little less than two weeks from now. If, if they do not have all their city permits approved and all their Caltrans permits approved by then, then the agreement is null and void, and there's no requirement to pay the $150,000. We believe that based on the status of the encroachment permit and transportation permit applications at this time, it is not likely, it's very unlikely, that the project is going to be at that point by June 15th. I already mentioned that the, the time for payment of the $150,000 is at the completion of construction and when the project is able to start producing electricity for sale. And then the last condition is that the $150,000 payment only needs to be made if the project is completed with construction and ready to sell electricity by December 31st, 2021. So about a year and a half from now. So that is the extent of the analysis that staff has had time to do on this agreement in order to get it on this agenda on June 2nd, which was at the request of the applicant. The council does have the option of approving this agreement tonight, but what staff is recommending is to get some feedback from the council on any changes that they might be interested in in this agreement and direction to staff to go back to the applicant and negotiate the terms of the agreement to the extent that the council wishes. So that's the staff report, and I'm available for questions as well as our public work staff. And I assume that the applicant would like to make a statement as well.
Councilmember Cordova.
I don't know if you want to give the applicant the opportunity to speak before, because my question could be for Mr. Malavi, or it could be for, for the applicant.
So I just wanted to make sure you didn't have any questions for our attorney before we invited the applicant forward.
Well, I could ask my questions to the applicant, but I, I'd like to at least hear what he's got to say.
Okay.
And you can always ask me questions after the applicant speaks.
Sure. Yeah, it's true. Councilmember Vega, is it for city attorney?
Yes, for the city attorney.
Okay.
Jeff, the length of these wind turbines are what, and the weight of these wind turbines are what?
I'm going to have to ask Craig Dearling.
Okay. And the other thing would be, the other question that we could go through is, is the city, are they being paid anything right now from this company for any, anything? Okay. What I understand is there's been some construction going on in Frick Springs up in that area, which is in Miguelito Canyon. There's been some oak tree removal, and I'm wondering if the city's gained any revenue or if they've given permission for that. I've had, I've been asked by several people that are environmentalists and they do care about the oak trees.
Real quick for that one, I'll take that as, no, there hasn't, for city property, because the city does own that property at Frick Springs. It hasn't encroached on any of the city property, but they have, I'm going to look, Mike, is, they have removed some trees, are doing work on the, on the roadway up there, but that's all county domain.
Gotcha. And the reason I'm asking is the separation here. This is a business endeavor, so I want to see what's in it for us and as they move forward. So it's good for clarity and transparency. So again, the question was the length of the wind turbines and the weight, and what our roads currently are rated for.
I'm going to turn it over to Public Works, Mr. Dearling, Dearling, for those questions.
So what we've received from the applicant is the longest loads are 256 feet long, and the heaviest loads are 250,000 pounds for the entire vehicle. The legal limit, without having to get a transportation permit or oversized load permit, is 80,000 pounds per vehicle. So the heaviest loads are a little bit more, more than three times the legal limit without having to get one of those special permits. And I remember, I don't remember the exact dimensions of the legal length, but it's, seems like it's in the 70, 60 to 70-foot range, if I'm remembering right. Maybe it's in the 50s. So in either case, they're many times more than the legal length also.
Gotcha. The difference between a truck route and a regular street, road base, PCI, everything, what's the weight limitations on, on the difference between a truck route and a normal city street? As far as, I guess you understand what I'm saying here. What's the difference in weight that they're allowed?
Our city code prohibits trucks, I don't remember if it's 8,000 pounds or 10,000 or 12,000 pounds, something on that order, prohibits trucks from using routes other than designated truck routes unless they have a specific delivery to, along that other route. Like they have to go along that other route to, to do what they need to do. So, so generally, these 80,000-pound loads wouldn't be ordinarily traveling on non-truck routes or, or loads significantly bigger than those legal loads.
So the truck routes are reinforced, and when the city does have to repave these truck routes, there is a higher cost to these. Is that correct?
They, they're generally more substantial pavement sections, yes. So they're generally thicker, thicker pavement and higher volume, as well as roads that carry heavier traffic are repaired more frequently generally because they get beat up more.
Yeah, thank you. And then the 250-foot long, that's times two, is that correct? Are these towers are four or 500 feet once they're put together?
So yeah, the 256-foot load is one of, is the blade load. So there are three blades per turbine and the, I don't remember the exact blade length. I think it's 225. And then there's the tractor in front of the blade, which is on the trailer.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Cordova.
No, my light was still on for, after when...
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. McCormick, please step to the microphone.
Do you want me to just address some of these questions that have come up?
Sure, yeah.
So a couple, a couple of corrections. First of all, we're not going to be closing any of the streets. We enter the city limits at V Street. All those components coming off Floridale all the way down to Ocean and I travel at whatever the traffic speed is. That's, that's not impacted by there. There are times that when we make that turn, that's when the traffic will be delayed going onto I Street. So there are no road closures. It's done by pilot cars, CHP patrols and so forth, the traffic safety and stuff. I wanted to address the June 15th that was put in the proposal that we proposed. That's only in, ties to the timing that we're trying to work with Caltrans on. Caltrans will issue our permit for all the way, including I Street, where expected June 15th. We've been working on this for months and months, and we've had calls with the city as well, with Caltrans on the phone. So that's where that date comes from. We wanted it done by June 15th because we have to make improvements to the corner of Ocean and I. Let me just address those, those improvements. For Caltrans, it's only the removal of two traffic signals and two light fixtures. That's the improvements that Caltrans is involved with on, on, on Ocean and I. For the city, it's much, much less. It's the removal of three trees on I Street, the removal of two benches, and I believe there's three birdhouses in a landscaping, and a water valve. That's all the improvements that have to be done on I Street. There's no other impact to the city other than those few components. We put in there June 15th because we also have to have time to do that work. So it wasn't a drop dead date. It was just a date that I tried to tie it to the Caltrans. Then we need to get a contractor in there to remove the birdhouses, remove the benches. The other items that are impacted is on the city property, there's a parking lot, there is an additional tree there, and the benches that I'm referring to are also on that private property, being the city property. So that's all the improvements that happened on Ocean and I. It's not very many. And so we wanted time to do that. Transportation of the actual components will not take place till sometime in July. Referring to the trucks and the truckloads, these are over, oversized and overweight trucks, but they're not over axle. In other words, the loads on the axles meet all the Caltrans conditions and meet most of the transportation that would deal with roads and so forth. We have already shot all the profile, all the way from I Street down to Cypress. We've already hired a company to do all that profile work. That profile work tells us the current condition of all the pavement. It takes a radar of every little bump that currently exists on that road, and we're willing to bond that road and then repair anything damaged or anything that takes place all the way from the city limits, which starts at V Street and ends at Cypress. So we will bond and repair all that work. Any pothole type work or anything like that should occur, will be repaired the same day. So as this stuff goes through, it's not overweight where it crushes everything because the axle loads are within the legal limits. We wouldn't have to do any improvements to the City of Lompoc or any of the Caltrans improvements all the way from the port of Stockton all the way to here, other than the blades. It's the blade lengths that create the problem, not the weight of the components. We could take the tower sections and make no improvements and make every turn, not even remove a stop sign. The problem is the length of the blades. The blades are also very light. They're long, but they're light, and therefore they're not over any legal axle limits all the way to the project. I think all the questions that, that were asked, that, that you had any others that I could, that I could ask to, that I can answer for you.
Councilmember Cordova.
So I understand your point, Mr. McCormick, on the number one item, which had the June 15th date. However, that date should have been further out then, even if it's just the permit that you're waiting for on Caltrans. For number two, what is the likelihood that all the testing and the commissioning of the project will be completed and that everything will stay on track and start producing electricity by December 31st of 2021?
So the previous, the previous contract with Jim and the, the city came up with, they were unhappy that the fact that the project could actually be built, and if it was delayed one day, they wouldn't get paid. So I just wrote in a termination date that was farther out, that would, I thought would make everybody happy, the fact that the project has a PTC requirement to meet the tax credits, December 31st of 2020. Our PPA requires us to be December 31st of 2020. So that's the goal. That's what we have to meet. That's what the schedule is currently under, is December 20, 31st of 2020. We have to be operational. I only put the other one in there so it wouldn't be a date that they thought, well, if it went into January something, we wouldn't get any money. So I just put in another year to have it. So there was some type of termination date at some point. If the project just doesn't move forward, this thing would self-terminate at some point.
And why not offer the money upfront? Why would the city want to wait? The city would be waiving its rights from day one with the possibility that there may be something that comes up somewhere along the line during the construction of this project. But yet, if any of that happens, the city would waive its rights, and there's a possibility that it won't see any of the $150,000 then. So why wouldn't you offer it upfront if you're asking us to waive our rights from day one?
We, the reason it's tied together is we need the encroachment permits. I have been working with the city, I forget, it's been months and months since we put in the encroachment permit. I produced more than 70... I produced more than 76 pages of documents dealing with the encroaching permit, and I just described, there's less than 10 items on this encroaching permit that needs to be done. So everything is tied together at the same time that we get an encroaching permit from all the entities, which is the last permit we need to make the project go COD. So it was a timing issue. If all of it comes together, everybody makes out. But if, for some reason, the city decides, you know what, we're just not going to give you an encroaching permit, and just drags it on, we've spent the money, but we're not even able to build the project.
Okay, and then my last question could be for you or for our staff representation. It wasn't listed on here, and I know that it's not the topic of discussion necessarily, but the consideration of the concrete trucks, or rebars, or, you know, the cement trucks, are they going to be traveling the same path as what the blades would be traveling? Or are they going to be traveling different paths throughout our streets?
No, it's, go ahead, but it's all the same path. It's all the same truck route. This way, it doesn't impact your city, it's just the one route that goes through.
And you guys have that down as a consideration, then I assume the city does.
Councilmember Mosby.
So how much did you offer originally?
It was a million dollars originally.
And what happened to that?
We have spent two and a half times that trying to get the project going, through other mitigation measures that were beyond everybody's control, not in all fairness. We've asked, you know, the city to step up and try to help us with that stuff. We have spent more, well, two and a half times that trying to get this to the point it's at. So would I like to come up with a higher number? Absolutely. But the budget, the problem is, the project doesn't have it anymore. It's been in other mitigation areas, tar plant, it's everywhere.
Yeah, because it's, you know, I appreciate the city manager and group bringing this forward, it'd be nice to, seeing, although, you still wouldn't have made the date before on the other agreement, if I understand.
I'm sorry?
You still wouldn't have made the date on the other agreement, because you had a...
Would we have made, I think, what was the termination date was?
It was December 31st, 2019, to have dirt actually turning.
So we wouldn't have made that date?
That the project had to start. Yeah, so it was also tied to the fact that we had not received our zoning clearance and all the other permits. Keep in mind now, we have gotten all our permits. We don't have, we're not waiting on any permits. We're actually working now, you heard, along San Miguel Road, that is all within the county. All the trees that have been removed were within the county right of way and/or on participating landowners' property, those trees have been removed. And so we've received, we've permits for everything, and we'll have our encroaching permit from Caltrans in the next few weeks.
Have you had a chance to read the city's report?
I have.
Okay, because there's a statement made in here that says that you still, Strauss has still not submitted the necessary information to complete the application. Are you aware of the information that you, that the city is saying, this was as of May 27th, 2020?
I've submitted all the information they requested to date, including the draft encroaching permit that Mr. Malloway, and we had discussed on the phone, they wanted me to prepare the encroaching permit, and I've even drafted that. So I've submitted everything for the application. I even updated a 76-page report to clarify everything I possibly could. I've supplied that to Craig and his team as well. And now I've also submitted the draft encroaching permit that explains everything, right down to the removal of every bush and tree and shrub and so forth.
What time of day would these trips be made?
8:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
Okay, and that's?
That's part of our CUP requirement for noise, distance from non-participating landowners and so forth for noise as well. So it's only from the hours from 8:00 to 5:00.
So if, and I'm saying if, we went forward, the problem I have with any contract or agreement like this is when there are time-sensitive deadlines that you have no control over. I would never enter something like this that have time-sensitive deadlines that I have no control over.
The only deadline in there is the issuance of the encroaching permit, which is in your guys' hand, not mine.
Well, you have to start producing electricity for sale December 31st, 2021.
Correct. That's the COD day of the project, and that's tied to our offtake, as well as the tax credits that are required for the project.
But I have, you know, we have no control over that, and I understand, in your case, you put it in because of the tax credit component that you have to have done, et cetera, et cetera. But again, you just must be able to. So I'm sorry, somebody couldn't make it that day, it's January 1st, sorry, city of Lompoc. It makes it very difficult to accept something that's really not achievable. We saw before there was a million dollars on the table that probably wasn't going to be achievable at that time. So now we're down to 150,000, and it's just very, very difficult to see us even getting any level of achievement with those numbers. It's just, because we don't have any control.
There is no COD date in there for you. There's no date that says if it doesn't make it by December 31st, 2020, you don't get paid. You get paid when the project goes COD, even if it goes CD in December of 2021.
The date is December 31st, 2021.
2021.
Right.
If it's not done in 2021, we don't have anything to talk about.
Well, I mean, you'd already initiated, but you'd already gone through the city of Lompoc, we've already done our share of the agreement, we've honored our portion of it.
The project would not be viable come December 31st of 2021. We have a PTC and offtake that's this year, December 20th.
I got you, but what you're getting from us, we've already done, and if you don't get it, we get nothing.
If the project never goes COD, if the project blows up in smoke, yes.
Okay. I just had questions for staff, but if somebody else has a question for you?
Councilmember Vega, any questions for the applicant?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
You're welcome.
The axles that are on the trucks, okay, I'm pretty familiar with semis and heavyweight vehicles. How many axles are there per truck? You said they met all the axle weights on the turns, okay? And I'm assuming that's for the towers and for the turbines, or the propellers, so to speak?
Yeah, so you have the tower sections, then you have the nacelle, the actual component being the turbine, and then you have the blade. The blade truck is very unique, it can have up to 24 axles. Again, that's not a very heavy component, but those axles allow that blade to turn within inches. You can move something that's 250 feet long and move it literally an inch in any single direction. These trucks are specially made for this type of delivery of components.
So sir, if you could just enlighten me, so we could get right to the meat of this, okay?
Sure.
You have a couple of alternatives. You want to go down Ocean Avenue, you want to turn down I Street, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and that's your easiest route, and you're asking for some accommodations. The only permitting you need are encroachments permits to do this, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
From the city of Lompoc. And the cost?
And the transportation, I'm sorry, nothing wrong, but the carriers will actually put in for the transportation permit, you'll need truck permits for that as well.
Okay.
The carriers will submit those.
Oh, okay. These are a condition of all of this, is that what's correct?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, now, the other part of it is, what are your alternatives here? Okay, obviously, okay? It seems like there's a frustration, I can tell in your voice, trying to get through this encroaching process, and it's probably pretty tedious, I'm sure you have a lot on your plate. So what are your alternatives, sir?
Well, this was the alternative that was approved and recommended by the city. So we had a transportation route, we submitted several during the CUP process, and this was the alternative route, which was looked at by third parties and so forth, and recommended and said, there's a route that we think would be a superior alternative route. That alternative route was sent out to the different agencies, including the city, and last time I was here, I presented with the letter that came from the city, saying, this is the route that you guys wanted to see as well. Less impacted the city, has only a few things that need to be improved, it's better for traffic, and so forth. So this was also the route that the city had sent in a letter, saying they wanted us to take.
Okay, now, the length of time the permit was that you were requesting as far as to be issued, how long is it going to take you guys to get all your infrastructure up there, where they can put the streets back in order?
Well, the only things that the modifications take place for are just for the blades. The blades will be delivered, if we didn't have any blades, we would have to do anything, right? So they would just go down the route normally. So the transportation period will basically take 12 weeks, starting sometime late July through late September, early November. So during those 12 weeks, those three months, immediately after that, the two lights would go back up, traffic lights, that's what we took down. We would redo the landscape there, put back the birdhouse and so forth, repair any damage or anything else that needed to be done, resurface roads. So you're talking about a three-month period, is all you're talking about.
So the cost of repairs, has that been estimated, is that through the city, as far as to put back everything? You're saying that you guys would put everything back, is that a cost to you, to Strauss? It's not, there's no cost to the city, is what you're saying, is that correct?
No, there's no cost to the city whatsoever. Everything is reimbursed. We even put up, we put a proposal in there for the bond for any damage that would take place. We have an estimate that we've already proposed for, starting from Ocean all the way to Cypress, that's the most impacted area in the weight that hasn't been evaluated by the city so much. We've done a lot of evaluation with that.
So how do we get some more money into an escrow account that accommodates any repairs aside from your bond moving forward? How does the city get this done in short order with your company?
We bond it, just like every other.
I got you, but you offered $150,000, but it's at the end. How do we get everything upfront to put into an independent account where the draw can come from there? So it's basically an investment from your company, instead of putting it at the end, which is a safety for you guys. But I'm saying, in business, how do we get to that point? Because I'm sure you have the ability to do that.
Sure, if we had issuance of the encroaching permit, that we're pretty much allowed to use the street and make those improvements, then we could put the money in escrow.
Yeah, I'm going to let Councilwoman, or the next person, to speak, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
But I think they all have good questions.
Councilmember Cordova. I think Mosby was on first. All right, Councilmember Mosby.
So I just got some questions for staff. So why would you recommend I Street? Can you fill me in on your thought process with I Street, and what that was all about?
Well, that recommendation came after I had the BWA Group in my office, and they recommended, or suggested the, we'll say it, the goodwill agreement for the million dollars. We didn't say yes or no, we didn't get into details. At that point, I said, okay, that's something, we can work through the details, but to say that we just went out there and said yes is not a correct statement. It was there, along with a carrot, if you will, of a million dollars to be handed to us. That's the only way it came about.
So I mean, I Street would probably be off the table if there was not a million dollars, is that what you're saying?
Correct. If council was asking me, yes.
Okay.
I think there's other things missing, excuse me, there's other things in here that we definitely would have to go through in more detail. I just wanted to bring, because of how things had gone on the first go-around, I just wanted to bring this straight to you. Things like extra blades, because if 10 years from now, this company may not be owned by the same people, it might be sold off to investors, hey, blades broke, how do you get them back up there? Well, you got to go take out all the trees, you got to take everything out again that you've done, so your trees that are now established over there, because if you go back in 2008, they weren't as large as they are now, there's no way to get them back up there unless you remove everything again. The other one is not just I Street, but that part of San Lucia that goes in front of the prison, that's all city-owned, that also needs to be looked at. Talking, you know, some of the things we would want to do is deflection testing on the roadway, because it has 24 axles, or whatever the number is, at 250,000, whatever pounds, that's expensive. That is a wear and tear on the road. Even if you can't see it, it does damage to the road base, just like when you do calculations, one road trip for a vehicle versus one road trip for a garbage truck is completely different. This is big. This is 24 axles at one time going over it, multiple times, you know, with all the trips. So there's more to this agreement that needs to be done than just a dollar amount right now, is how I feel. So those are just some of the notes I had right now.
How long does it take to do a deflection test?
I'm going to look over.
Or to get it lined up, I'm sure companies...
Well, a company would come out, we wouldn't do it ourselves.
Right, but I mean, it takes time to get somebody, you know, I mean, I don't, usually you got to send things out, but...
Yeah, it would take a little lead time to get the testing set up. The actual testing process could be done within a day or so.
But how long would it take for you to find somebody to do this deflection testing?
Yeah, to get the contract established, probably be a couple of weeks to get them on the ground here.
The other one, when you look at it, is from, this is me again.
Hold on, Mr. Dearling, I have another question for you too.
If you're looking at it, let's say your PCI comes in at 85, and you go, great. Afterwards, where you retest everything, and now it's, say, 75, I'm doing it off the top of my head, maybe, that's like an 11% reduction in the use or the life of that roadway. You don't just say, okay, well, we'll pay 11% of whatever that cost is, you know, we're going to have to do a formula-driven net present values on all these things, because that roadway is going to be hit in a detrimental way at some point. And visually looking at it right then after it's done, it's not the same as how many years of life was now taken off because of the trips on there. Cars don't beat it up as much, even a trash truck won't beat it as much as that many trips with that many axles at that heavy of a load.
Sure. So maybe somebody can answer, why not E Street? That's the truck, or F Street, F Street's truck route, right? Why not, I mean, I know it's easier, one less turn, or whatever, so maybe...
Yeah, that's maybe more a question for the applicant. If Street's okay with it.
Because if they went that street, I mean, we probably wouldn't be having much discussion, would we?
There would still be removals, so there'd be some things to go over, but it would be a truck route.
So, and Mr. Dearling, maybe you can answer too, because is the statement in here, it says that they have not submitted all the necessary information? Is there something that, why he's here, we can connect the dots right now, what are we missing?
Right, so a few of the items, generally when we issue encroachment, or, yeah, encroaching permits or transportation permits that involve Caltrans also, we want to have Caltrans' final decision on it, or at a minimum, have coordinated that to finality, so that they agree that they're going to sign off on it, and we agree we're going to sign off of it, which hasn't happened yet. We, as it says in the staff report, recently, last, about a week ago, received this set of plans for modifications to the I Street signal. And a couple of weeks prior to that, we had a conference call with applicant and Caltrans to go over our needs related to that. So they moved quick between the conference call and resubmital in relative terms. But we have not yet, again, had another meeting with Caltrans and the applicant to coordinate how Caltrans feels about the submittal, so I imagine they're still reviewing it, and we anticipate connecting with them again. But all the issues have not quite yet been finalized, even with regard to that single turn. Additional items include basically everywhere else along the city routes, making sure that our needs are met, as the plans that we received show the truck turning from Ocean Avenue onto I Street, ending up in the opposing traffic lane next to Sissy's Cafe on the other side of the median, facing south. But we don't have any further plans showing where it actually comes back into the correct lane to head south, which logically should be somewhere in the intersection of Cypress and I. But we just like plans showing where that all happens, as well as plans showing, confirming that the other trucks can make the turn without hitting that median next to Sissy's, or whether they're also going to be in the wrong lane. Other items include traffic control, both for the loads, as well as for the work, and additional language details, commitments need to be made in the agreement that was discussed, related to the permanent repairs. So we've talked a lot about removals, there's things that need to be removed to get the project done, and we understand those are the time-sensitive focus items. But from the city's perspective, there's a lot of damage to be done, running over the sidewalk, running over the pavers, tree wells, and all this pavement with heavy loads repeatedly. So from the city's standpoint, we need some security and commitment in detail as to what's going to be repaired, what are we going to have back when it's done. Those are some of the items that we're still finalizing, and we understand, we want to focus on helping the applicant achieve the timeline they're trying to achieve, but we can't run forward without getting those things worked out.
Have you relayed all that information to them?
We've discussed it, we've passed back and forth emails, things like that, and we are making progress, just with those recent submittals, like I said, a week ago. So we're getting a lot closer. So we're, we're getting a lot closer than we have been over the past few months.
All right, thank you. And to the applicant real fast, why, why I, I know it's one, couple less turns, but why not the truck route on?
So the E, the EIR process, I'm, I'm sure you're familiar with it, we, we come up with recommendations and how we want to do things. Then a third party comes in and does an outside evaluation and says, this is good, but the impact is this, this, and this. So they're the ones that came back and said, hey, there, there's a superior route that needs to be evaluated, you need to look at this. And that route is determined, goes to them, and they're the ones who determine the superior route. They say, hey, it's less impacted the city, it's less to traffic and so forth. So they come up with all the reasons why the superior route would be superior. That goes out for public comments, and it did go out the public comments, and it went out to the city. The city came back and they agreed that the impact would be less, just like we would agree, because it isn't better route. So that's how that comes about, because going through, if you go down Ocean and you have to go down F Street and Cypress and so forth, you're just making a horseshoe. You're going just around it, and all we're saving is the distance from, from Ocean to I, and it's, it's like, I don't know, it's two tenths of a mile or a tenth of a mile. To replace that entire street is, would be about $300,000. If you dug it all up and had to just start up and make it a transportation route forever, the cost of doing that is about $300,000 for that entire road. We've already spent all the money shooting all the LiDAR in the surfaces of that road to know its present condition. So I understand that they probably want to get another engineer, but we've already paid the same engineers that we paid to the county to evaluate the road all the way from, to the end of the project. They have shot LiDAR and videoed that entire street, and that LiDAR will tell you not only its present condition, but at the end of the project will tell you its condition at the end, and based on that, maybe you have to repave it, maybe you have to resurface it and so forth. The item is that, that Greg, that Craig's talking about also, has, have all been submitted now. They were less submitted in the draft, in the draft encroachment permit that I just sent out last week or so, seven days ago or something. All those items are in there. How are we gonna climb the curb, what we're gonna protect the curb, we're gonna, what we're gonna gravel so that there's no, nothing done to the landscaping? All that stuff is in the draft, in the draft encroachment permit, all those things have been.
He was mentioning, how do you repair it back though? Is that in there as well, how you bring it back to what it was?
Yeah, so we will, yeah, so we go back and move the gravel, re-landscape, replant the trees, it's, it's all in there. Put the birdhouses back.
So one of the things I think was also, as the city manager said, was why they accepted more accept, willing to accept I Street, was there was a million dollars on the table at that time. So I think things have substantially changed, and you're saying it's a time strike, but understanding what he said, the million dollar carrot.
The, the community benefit agreement wasn't, it wasn't for the use of I Street. It's, it's still not for the use of I Street, it's for the benefit of the community. It just happens to be the fact that, hey, that we have to use I Street, and so when this, this thing got tied together, it kind of got tangled together. We're not here offering you money for the use of I Street per se, we're offering money to the community for items that you guys just debated for almost an hour ago, shortfalls to your budget and so forth, and we're offering you money for that purpose. Not just for the use of I Street, we want to use I Street, and we're gonna pay for all those costs, all the damages for those costs, all the transportation permits that still have to come through the city, that those come at a cost to us. We're not asking you to waive anything or us not pay any of these fees, we're gonna pay all the fees plus, give you this extra money.
How, how long is the surety bond posted for?
Till the end of the project. So at the end of the project, we will send, and that's also, by the way, it's in the encroachment agreement, basically says, hey, we send you a notice, say we finished, we finished the project. We, we've repaired, if the, if the road's damaged to where we need to repair, we, we repair it. And only at that time do we say, hey, come look at your road, we repaired it. If there's, if there's some kind of disagreement, and then we, there's a bond in place, and go back and repair it and do more work or whatever. But at the end of the project, just a notice that goes out, go up to the county Santa Barbara that we're done with San Miguel Road, and same thing, we go up to the city, we're done with, with the use of city roads, and, and so forth. Just one, if I could just comment one more thing along San Miguel Road. Those impacts and shoulder works, we're not doing pavement along that road, we're not widening that road by pavement, we're doing work within the right of the shoulder. Those trees have been removed, are removed, it's a permanent impact. It was part of the EIR, it wasn't a temporary, those removal of oak trees in the county is very serious, right? So those trees will not be, they don't grow back and we have to remove them another date. That road will remain in the condition it's at, because we do have to do maintenance and so forth on the project.
So getting, getting back to F Street, would it be an easier agreement to work through F Street, being that I, I Street is not, it's not truck route? I mean, that's one of the complications, I think, they were trying to get through.
F Street becomes a, a lot more complex. There's, there's some private properties, there's removal of fences, there's business, we'd have to, we'd have to close those streets during transportation, because we would have to cross. When we come down the I at I Street, we'd have to go into the other lane, go all the way down, close that traffic all the way off until we make all the turns to go around the corner. And then it has an additional impacts, removal of, there's a, I believe there's a bus station stand there, there's light poles on the other side, so there actually would have to be encroachment items on Cypress that would be much greater than the impacts that dealing with I Street. Okay.
Councilmember Cordova.
So the submittals were received then, or submitted and received after May 27th, when the staff report was sent out or was completed? Because the staff report says that, that their application is not complete and that they have not responded yet to the comments or feedback or whatnot that, that staff had.
We have not received anything since May 27th, so what the staff report says is up to date, and the, the May 27th submittal is basically these, these two pages that do clearly indicate removals necessary and a few interim modifications for the turn from Ocean Avenue onto South I up until the point of the parking lot behind Sissy's. But it doesn't address at all the permanent repairs or some other concerns that the city has, as well as not addressing anything outside of that, those limits. So it addresses about three-quarters of a block of one of our streets that are being impacted.
And, and did a response go back then to the applicant about, hey, these things were missed, because he's standing here saying that he's submitted everything and he's addressed everything, but we're saying, no, he hasn't. I mean, we're in the room right now.
Right, yeah, so, so like, one of the things on the list is the, the Caltrans, and this, this is both submitted to us and to Caltrans, because it's a turn from a Caltrans route onto a city route, taking out Caltrans signal poles and replacing them with temporary signals and affecting some other things. So, so I think everybody, we're mutually aware that he doesn't have his Cal, his approved Caltrans permit yet, as well as the city permit, and the city and Caltrans have not talked since this submittal. We haven't had a conference call with the applicant and Caltrans since the submittal. So, so no, not, not all the details have been worked out and approved, and this is one of them.
So you, you understand that then?
Caltrans, that's correct, we won't have the Caltrans permit till June 15.
I think.
Okay. And to me, like, there wasn't clarification there, but okay, good. Now, on the million dollars, I just want to say too, that, that included all the road repairs and everything, so it's not like we were actually, and, and the council didn't have that report, we didn't have the, the, the knowledge of that report early on. We're getting this one now, and I think the, the, the initial offer was given to us when this report came out. But it, it included for us to waive our rights to not, you know, go against the project, but it also included all the costs associated to this, so it wasn't like we were getting a million dollars. And has, has, has the staff completed their cost for actual repairs? And do you, do you have an idea of what that's gonna look like?
So we have made a preliminary estimate, although it's based on a lot of assumptions about where the trucks will go and where they won't go, because this, this exhibit is basically the only one that we have showing where truck tires will go for one of the load types. So, so it's unclear where else, like, when these truck tires will get back on the correct side of the road, and where the other load lengths will go, whether they'll be entirely within the right lane, or, or whether they also go into the wrong lane to go around the median. So with, with the rest of those details clarified, which we hope are forthcoming, we can hone in that estimate more closely. So, so we do have kind of a preliminary estimate, but we're lacking some information that would improve it greatly.
Okay. And taking it back to, thank you, and taking it back to the actual staff report and what the city attorney said from the beginning, that is not our topic. What, what the actual topic for us tonight is whether we want to accept $150,000, which they are offering to the city of Lompoc, and in return, you know, for us to waive our rights to oppose, protest, challenge, or seek mitigation measures from the approvals. What's the likelihood from our city attorney that, that this may happen during the project?
I don't think it's likely that the city would need to challenge any of the approvals that the applicant needs from other government agencies to start the project. But what my concern is, is that in the future, the applicant may want to modify the project in some way, or modify one of their permits from the county or from another agency in some way. And I'm concerned that the language of the agreement is so broad that it would prevent us from challenging a modification to the project in the future. So that is, I don't think there's a lot of risk from giving up our right to challenge the, the approvals from other government agencies, just to get the project started. But I'm worried about modifications.
Thank you.
City manager, for clarity, would, whether we had a million dollars or we had $150,000 given to us as a community benefit, would it change anything about what we are doing as far as processing these permits, given the nature of what has to be done?
I'm not quite understanding the question.
Often, community benefit contracts and offers are a, a way to incentivize a city to do more and, and prioritize the project. And I want to make sure the public understands that, that is not what this would be turned into, that this project is in the pipeline with every other project that has needed to be done, that this is the staff doing the absolute necessary work, and that we are following all the proper paths and avenues. And whether or not we were offered any level of money would not change any way we are analyzing and protecting our city due to the potential impacts this project will have on us.
No, that, that is correct. We, just like other projects, if you come in the queue and you're number four, you stay number four, even if you come up with another, if you were to offer something large, it, it has taken considerable staff time, because there has been, in, in a question from Council Member Cordova, it's been multiple, I mean, multiple go-back-and-forths between the company and our staff, and trying to get all of the information that's necessary. And, you know, it's, it's tough, it's trying to get it done, and, but no, they wouldn't, there's no special privileges granted to anybody for anything like that.
And I think the second thing that the community needs to be aware of is we're not doing this because we're trying to stop a project. This is a requirement, this is what we as a city are required to do, is to protect our public streets, protect our neighborhoods, protect the investment that our residents and our businesses have made in theirs, and so these analysis have to happen, they have to be done correctly, and we have to be making sure that we are protecting our communities. So whether or not we benefit in any way, I mean, secondly, we don't benefit from this project other than for a very short window. For a while, there are employees that are building it, staying in our hotels, which is wonderful, our hotels desperately need that. We have locals who've been hired to work on the project, so there's a large number of people recently getting jobs that, due to COVID-19, might have actually lost jobs. So there's all these short-term pluses, but the city of Lompoc doesn't directly benefit from the energy despite being our own energy company, that is going to a different energy company. We don't get any of the taxes that the county is collecting as part of this property development and the long-term history that it is. And so, again, I appreciate the fact that we have budget issues, and I appreciate the fact that we've been offered, I just want to make sure that as we have this discussion, that if we choose any level of a community benefit, that it is always truly about what's best for the community based on the work we're actually doing, not on an agreement for additional funding for us to utilize. So I, that's why I wanted the, the clarity around this discussion and as to why it's so important that we're asking details that I know are related to the permit process, but have by discussion been tied to it. So that, that's the clarity I was looking for. Does council have any more questions for staff or Baywa's representative? Seeing none, we will open the floor for public comment. The number to call is 805-875-8201. Remember to mute your PC, TV, or radio when your call is put through. You will have three minutes to speak on this topic. If you would like to go ahead and step forward, if you're in the room, you may begin, you have three minutes, please come to the podium while we wait to see if anyone calls.
I'm George Bedford, community organizer, and I'm here to speak against this agreement. First of all, it started off at a million, I don't even think you guys are aware, and I don't think staff has enough input to know how much damage is going to be done within the city limits of Lompoc. We're, we're, we keep concentrating on these great big blades coming in, but how about all the concrete truck loads that are gonna be in the city of Lompoc tying up streets and damaging streets? Does anybody think about that portion of it? Concrete trucks are pretty heavy, and they don't have 24 axles to deal with. So, and plus, I don't think Baywa, Strauss, and whoever's gonna be the end developer of this project really knows all the permitting they still don't have, because there's a lot of fish and game right now, situations going on up the canyon. So I don't know if the city was aware of the trees that got taken down at Frick Springs, I don't know who authorized that, but there's a lot of stuff going on up the canyon that all five of you might want to take a short trip up there and see what's going on, and then to be told that they're not gonna do anything to improve that road up there is crazy, because you also have access right at Frick Springs that ties into Miguelito Canyon, and you're tied in at one of the narrowest portions of the road. So there's more damage than what's gonna occur right within the city of Lompoc. So I think staff needs to be given the leeway to look at everything and get all their ducks in a row before they ever agree to sign an agreement. So that's all I've got to say, I'm dealing with this thing on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you. The number to call again is 805-875-8201, and remember to mute your PC, TV, or radio, the number's 805-875-8201. City clerk, did we have any written communications on this matter?
Yes, we received one email from Mr. Ron Fink. It was placed on the, on the website, it is outside for public and has been distributed to all of council.
Thank you.
Hello, you're live in the Lompoc City Council meeting, you have three minutes to provide public comment.
My first question is, is the amount that they're offering, the 150,000, enough to cover the staff time that's gone into this project? And the other question I would have is, after they complete this project and things are up and running, say they need, you know, additional equipment or other things to happen, how do we pay for that? Or, or do we have to go back through this whole process again? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we have had in-room and no additional in-room, heard the written commentary and see no additional. and see no additional callers for public comment. We will close public comment on this matter and bring it back for council to provide direction and information to staff. Councilmember Vega.
Moving forward, I don't believe we're in a position here to accept any agreement from you, sir, because, again, you're still waiting for Caltrans and to get everything and get your ducks lined up with the city. And, and so I think at this time, I just don't see enough on there right now. Maybe city staff can comment on, their application isn't complete because they're still waiting for Caltrans approval. It sounds like we're all working together to go in the same direction, but I don't think we're there yet. So I don't see any way of moving forward right now with this agreement.
Mayor.
Yes.
As I was sitting here, I thought of two comments that maybe I, maybe will be helpful. First is, the caller asked whether the $150,000 is enough money to cover the staff time that's being spent on this project. And just to make it clear again, we are intending, in the encroachment permit and the oversized vehicle permits, to condition the project to cover all of the city's costs for damage to the streets, wear and tear to the streets, and staff time. And the $150,000 is in addition to that, the cost that the applicant is going to pay for that. However, it is possible that in order to maybe be compensated for that staff time earlier, that a reimbursement-type provision could be added to this community benefit agreement to have a deposit for the staff time earlier. That's just an idea. Another idea is, as far as the agreement provisions that were already submitted, there's that requirement that they have to start work by June 15th, and they have to be ready to sell electricity by December 31st, and we don't really have control over those dates. An idea is to just get rid of those dates in the agreement and say that the payment is made on the day that their trucks start transporting equipment down Lompoc streets. And then whenever they, you know, we'll have an incentive to issue the permits promptly, but also, you know, be diligent in our analysis of them. And we won't be relying on any dates that we don't have any control over. I'd also want to clarify, in response to the point that councilmember Cordova brought up, that this agreement is not going to cause the city to waive any of its rights to challenge modifications to the project in the future. So those are ideas that I thought of just sitting here, but, and, and we can have a discussion among staff with the applicant about those if you wanted to, but I would remind the council that we would still be giving up our right to challenge any of the other government agency approvals on this project. And it seems like there may even be, based on the public comment from Mr. Bedford, some fish and wildlife approvals that at least I was not aware about before. And then there's the issue of the amount, the $150,000 amount. I don't know if there's any direction on that amount. Those are the points that I thought of as I was sitting here, if that's helpful at all.
Thank you, they are. I also see the city manager would like to...
If I may, I just, I think, if I might recommend, the recommendation would be for number two, where the city attorney and myself could get together, take what we've heard today, and also some other thoughts I have and concerns about it, put together what we might like to see in an agreement, bring it back to council, see if that's something that you would agree, you know, sort of a listing of things that we'd like to see changed, and then pare it down, because right now, we're, we can, sort of jumping around, talking about different things, but if we can have a list that Jeff and I have worked through, I think it'd be a little bit easier to then go back to the group, to the company, and say, here's what the council would like to see added to it, you know, from, from just terminology to dates to how it's paid out, as Councilmember Vega said, maybe it's an escrow account, who knows what, just trying to get all those things aligned in a better way. This was originally just intended so you saw what came forward now, and then, like we were trying to do on the first go-around, we'll come up with suggestions for council to look at in more detail.
Thank you for that input. Councilmember Mosby.
Do you think you could bring something back next meeting?
Jeff, are you around?
I mean, you don't have to have everything, maybe something as we're advancing. I think this is something of significant importance. I think the applicant has heard what we've had to say, staff has said a significant amount of issues. We're bringing this to light.
Yeah, we, actually, we have a, wait, I'm lost on days. Days, okay, no, we still have the 16th as the next one. I was thinking it was, we have that extra week in June at the end, but no, we can, I can get with Jeff, we can brainstorm, we'll, we'll bring in...
It seems like it's an important timeframe for the applicant as well, and I know you guys have been chewing on this for a while.
Yeah.
I mean, that's exactly what you were saying earlier, is what I was saying, you've heard a lot from all of us. You guys need to get into some of the, more of the negotiations. There seems to be a little bit of miscommunication on what staff seems to be missing, and maybe some other things are coming, but I think there's more to go before us making a decision.
Well, we can, we can shoot for this next meeting, the 16th, and have something.
That would be my recommendation. Do we need a, do you want a formal motion or a head nod to continue this, or?
Councilmember Vega.
I think it'd be option number two.
Yes, I, I'd like us to work on the amounts. I like even numbers. Maybe the applicant can actually look at this, you know, as being part of the community and I do applaud you moving forward, let's take a look at that while you're drawing up the agreement, see what we can do to negotiate moving forward. But I agree with you.
So we have a recommendation from council. Do you need any additional direction? Okay, thank you. The, momentarily, I'm going to read the number now. We'll have oral communication. The number for that is 805-875-8201. Any additional written communications, Madam Clerk?
Nothing, then you've already received.
Thank you. We will now open for the last two minutes of oral communication on any city-related matter. The number there is 805-875-8201. Remember to mute your PC, TV, or radio.
Please provide public comment.
Hello, City Council and Mayor. I'm calling as a concerned citizen of Lompoc to discuss the peaceful Black Lives Matter protest that occurred yesterday. I would first like to thank Chief Mariani and the Lompoc Police Department for allowing citizens to protest peacefully. With that being said, I would like to point out that the peaceful protesting means nothing if it does not result in tangible change. It is critical that the city of Lompoc step up and take some sort of action to acknowledge and address the concerns the protesters are marching for. Now, you might be asking, how? How can the city address the system-wide problem of racism that is afflicting the entire nation? One very simple way would be to hold a special city council meeting to hear from the people, specifically people of color, about how our community can address their concerns relating to racism and police services. Another option would be to release a press release stating how the city hears their concerns and how we plan to move forward. The city of New Haven in Connecticut set a great example when the police chief led a public department-wide denunciation of public, of police brutality and the collective renewal of their vows to faithfully and impartially protect the city and its residents. There are so many ways we as a community can move forward from here, but silence from the city of Lompoc is a confirmation that a peaceful protest changes nothing. Our community came out and protested in the right way, respecting businesses and private property. Now it's your turn to send a message. You can either show that you heard and will take action to change, or you can show that you heard and just don't care. The message you should send is up to you as our elected leaders. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional oral communications from those in council chambers? Seeing none and no further calls, we will close oral communications and bring it back to council. I'll start with Councilmember Vega.
I'd like to thank the community for the protest that was kept peaceful. I see the concerned business owners, and I think all of us feel the same. Our community is so close to our hearts, none of us want to see violence or our businesses broken into, especially in this time of stress and duress. I think that all of us are just hoping that we get back to some sort of normalcy. So we're here to help, so I want to just say thank you to the community. The message is heard, and much due respect to all the people that were part of that movement because they kept it within the lines here, and they did respect Lompoc. So thanks again.
Thank you. Councilmember Mosby.
Well, in, in response to the caller and such, I just wondered if there's ability for the, well, the city manager to have the, the police chief come back and able to respond and an opportunity that we could get into that? I don't know if you'd already had something planned to meet that, or?
I did talk to him today briefly because he was on a, they, they had a big call going on, so he was actually on the way to the call, but I can get back to him again. He didn't, he didn't have any issues with it, it's just we didn't have time to talk about it.
I know he's very tired right now and stuff, but I know we need a little time to get this, put this together. But, you know, I, I guess I could make it as a council request that we, we bring forward, even if it's a special meeting, to bring into the level of discussion on, on their challenges, what they've been doing, and how they move forward, and, and how they're doing. So I don't, if that would be a...
We can do that.
Do I need to request that, city attorney, or the city manager's already said we could do that?
If the city manager is saying that he'll do it, then...
I had already started.
Very good. I think that's appropriate, and I think that, that helps with a lot of the public wanting, wanting to say something. It was one of the reasons why I made the suggestion, I'm glad it was peaceful yesterday, but I'd made the suggestion that we stay open so that they could come to the microphone. It would have been a long late night, we probably would have had to kick to other things, but I do appreciate them staying calm the whole time. I think if we'd known that and not seen what happened in Santa Maria, we probably would have kept council open, and we would have been available yesterday for more comment, but we were kind of advised that with what happened in Santa Maria potentially, and what we saw all over places, that we, we were hoping it would never happen. But there was some very violent statements made on the forums, very threatening to some of the people, and I hope we can, I know we have to stop that all the way around. There's some very threatening things and comments that were made that we, we need to slow down on and stop. With that getting to a happier note, being the city's representative on SB CAG, I did represent the city of Lompoc at the last SB CAG meeting. Here's some documents, something that I've been working hard on, as many people have, showing here, this is some, showing that the, the Riverside Bridge project with shop funding has been advanced, where it was sitting at, at the late 2030s under the shop funding program. The project is intended to be programmed in the 2022, advancing it 10 to 15 years earlier to getting discussions and moving forward. It was on the mid-year eight program before. This is some, some good news, and it will help potentially with some of our significant issues of people getting across that. Likewise, if I could, Mr. Albro, another thing real fast. Did you bring up the Saninaz River Valley groundwater basin? So I'm also the city's representative for the sustainable groundwater management. We are the western area. If you could just, could you scroll through there a little bit? This was our last meeting, we had minutes, and such went through the number of people that are on there. This will be available, I assume the link on the city website. It's a head nod, yes. So the people can get into this, this is important, we're talking about our groundwater, how we're moving forward, how they're analyzing the program. A lot of the, the first year or so we've been going through is developing the partnership agreement with the, the surrounding areas, the agriculture and such. It, it, there's a, I think it's 66 pages, so keep, keep going here, this is minutes. Keep going. There's the, the money, the balance sheet as they're going here, how much money we're spending, the city has invested, we're a quarter share in expenses as it's going out through there. Everybody's paying their bills, a lot of engineering analytics that are going through. I could spend a lot more time, but I know you guys are all going to want to read it tonight, right? More of the agreement signatures, okay, so we get into the, the status update and some of the modeling that they're doing, so basically, they're modeling the basins, so we know how much water's in, there's strata, where the water's coming from, where's it going? Keep, keep, keep going, keep going. So you see the basins, we're the western, there's the central and the eastern, shows the players that are in there. Keep going, shows us where we are, right there, we are here, so it's got a couple years to go as we're chewing through this, to get this, and this was a mandate from years ago, as it says in, in the newsletter here from Jerry Brown in 2014. So keep chugging. Here's, here's a, a model, kind of like a, of showing what our basin is, where the water comes from, where it goes. Keep going, and then more of the science behind how they're figuring out what it looks like below the soil and how it holds water. Keep going, more, more and more and more fun stuff. Again, this is showing how they're doing the modeling, they're doing a lot of data collection on, on wells, going back historically. So this is a machine that you probably see flying around. This puts out less of a pulse than a toaster, as they tell us, but this will be able to see upwards of 1,500 feet into the soil to see what is down below us. Here's more of the description of, of how they're doing this. There's where our next stop is. Keep going, keep going. I know, going fast, but it is important, without water, what do we have? And this is very important about the sharing of the water, and this is the data component that they're collecting. Keep going. They're compiling, it's just a phenomenal amount of data and information to put together these, what we've got going on. And keep going. It's a lot of fun reading. Keep going. I would have given you guys other reports, but prior to this, most of it was positioning and how we were setting up the people together. And then we get to the final page, which is coming soon. This is the quarterly newsletter. Keep going. And in the quarterly newsletter, they're getting it out there because they want the input from, from, from the people, and the, this is what I've given you guys, is the copy of page 66, and it gives you a quick synopsis of what's going on. So with that, I also did represent the city of Lompoc at the Air Pushing Control District. There was an email sent to me with the quarry up here asking for some help or assistance. I don't know if everybody else got the email on council, from members. They haven't got back to me yet, but they're wanting some potential help and assistance with him on, on getting permitting to help get started back again, being, they believe that what the product they're maturing, especially this up here, is essential product. But getting any questions about the APCD, the information is available online. With that, no further comment.
Thank you. Councilmember Cordova. Councilmember Cordova.
I just want to express my admiration for the peaceful demonstration last night. 1994, I was a teenager and I remember going through something like that. And that was my first experience, being able to express my voice and, um, you know, make my way in a procession all the way down to City Hall here in Lompoke. And, um, so seeing what I saw last night, it was the majority were young people. They were teenagers, a lot of them were very young. And this is their first experience with expressing themselves and especially wanting the community to hear their voice. This is their community. They were, they, they were very careful to respect the community. Um, a lot of what I saw and a lot of, um, the communication that I saw online and their ability to reach out and, and have that communication with the mayor and, and have the communication with our police department, I thought that that was admirable. And I just want to commend them publicly and say that, that I was very proud of that. And also I did attend the Economic Recovery, uh, Reinvention and Resilience, uh, Town Hall meeting with Reach a couple of days ago, I think it was on June 1st. And where they talk and they recommend, um, infrastructure investment as something that has to be part of our plan, of our comeback plan. And, uh, it's something that is very important to me as we look at the future of our community and why I'm so passionate about, um, what our future's going to look like financially. So, thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck.
I have no reports.
Thank you. A couple of announcements on behalf of community organizations. The Lompoke Valley Community Health Organization is working with seniors who need assistance. You can call 211 or Karen Ortiz at 805-875-8868. They're organizing grocery deliveries, urgent health and personal supplies, prescription deliveries and other resources you might need as seniors in the community. And they wanted to make sure the, the community heard about it. So I, um, offered to make the announcement. The other community benefit that, um, is being provided by Hancock College is a tuition-free career academy this summer. I got this today from Hancock. There are several classes that will be offered free of charge. Resume writing, intro to computers, Microsoft off-training, office training, website development, business startup. Those classes will be Monday through Thursday from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. for one week at a time. There's also a six-week program in organizational leadership that is a three-credit program with modules in managing organization, leadership style, people skills and other executive leadership issues. That module is, uh, designed as half-credit courses. So as you complete it, you get more credits. And those will meet on Friday from 6:00 to 9:00 and 8:00 to 2:00 on Saturdays for six consecutive weeks. You can register online at HancockCollege.edu/careeracademy. And the classes start the week of June 15th and will be online. So be quick to register before those classes fill up. Regarding the request by Emirrs to, uh, get an extension, I did hear back from Emirrs today that the APCD Hearing Board did approve the variance for Emirrs to continue processing the self-pur until the new boiler is operational. So they did approve it, so all is good, um, with Emirrs and APCD right now. So, um, thank you, Councilmember Mosby, for bringing that up. And good news from Emirrs that it is moving forward. And the reason self-pur is so important is it's a diatomaceous earth product that is only being produced at our, uh, location of the worldwide Emirrs, um, production facilities that is being used in medical facilities to help process some of the COVID-19 testing. So it's really important for them to still be able to produce that, um, information. The county, uh, sent out an email earlier today talking that over 1,875 businesses have self-certified as part of Phase 2. And of those, approximately 203 of those are in our local Lompoke Valley community. So, uh, congratulations to those community, uh, businesses that are going through the process, have a plan and are self-certifying. And we're excited to support you. And for those looking to open in Phase 3 or for, Phase 4, be sure to go to recoverySBC.org in order to look at those requirements in, um, those phases, depending on where you are, and begin planning now. Because as they open it up, the sooner you have a plan and the sooner you're ready to self-certify, the quicker it happens. Regarding the protests, they are going to continue. And I do appreciate every single member of the community who supported them, no matter where you stand on the issue. I want all to remember that treating those that have treated you with harassment and violence only permeates mutual hate. So much like the golden rule, there's the silver rule. Don't treat people like you don't want to be treated. We need to change systemic racism across the board and we need to treat others, no matter how they've treated us, the way we really do want to be treated. Pointing fingers, laying blame only identifies the problem, but that doesn't solve it. It's so important that we move forward with a plan and actions that enact change. So, as I said last night, I was willing to be present. I wasn't there to take the stage. I wasn't there to take the focus off what our community is asking of us. We are allies. We are listening. We understand the demand for change. Change has been implemented and we need to be a better at sharing what that is, which is why the city manager and the police chief are working on answering so many of the questions that you have emailed me. Those have been forwarded on. They are being looked at. We are working on how do we present this information so that you get as much transparency from us as possible to show you the improvements we've already made in public safety, as well as the things that we've identified that we know we still don't need to work on? And what are we doing to work on that? At the same time, listen to you to hear what we may have missed. We are here to lead by example. We absolutely do appreciate and respect this community for setting such an amazing example of what a peaceful protest can do for a community, not only be heard, but be seen. And I thank you for that. I thank the chief for asking for us to give him a chance to provide a peaceful environment by shutting council down for the evening. So he could focus on protecting the protesters and protecting our local businesses. To those businesses, I appreciate that you knew it wasn't going to be the locals and took the warning that it might lead to otherwise and protected yourself and that you know that this wasn't about our local community, but potential others abusing the scenario. So again, I am constantly amazed by this community. You make me very proud to be your mayor. And I want to promise you that we are listening. We are working on trying to get the information to you, even with our staff that is strained, pulled in many directions, but really does care about the community and really wants to show you the changes they are trying to make and implement. We'll adjourn this meeting until the regular meeting of Tuesday, June 16 at 6:30 p.m. Thank you. Have a good evening.